There you go, yes.
All right, welcome everyone to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. This meeting is being held virtually and we are recording the meeting. And we will start with a roll call and we'll go through the items of the agenda and we'll explain a little bit about how to do public comment. We know this is a very well attended meeting, so we'll give you some instructions about that. So let's, this is Kristen Ferguson, I'm Chair of the Planning Board, and let me just go around and see who else is here tonight. Mr. Sayah.
Yeah.
Mr. Flint.
Here.
Mr. Bosette.
Here.
Ms. Orbital.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
And Ms. Bacanini, is she here? Can't quite see everybody at the same time.
She's not here yet.
Okay. All right.
I can just make one statement for every, all the attendees. Please make sure you stay muted until the public comment period is asked for by the Chair.
All right, so on our agenda tonight is the site plan review for the Concord Children's Centers. We know, we have a lot of folks here in support and to have comments against that as well, so we'll hear that. We do have another item on the agenda after that, that's the site plan review for BOA Concord Assisted Living. So we'll try to get to that as close to 7:30 as we can. So I want to let everybody know, there's probably a lot to discuss about the Concord Children's Center. We may not finish the discussion tonight, so keep that in mind, that it may be continued to another night, but we will make sure to hear what everybody has to say. So let me, and then after that, the Board is going to take care of some administrative business that has to do with our public hearing, which is being held next week on Thursday, May 13th, please come, and we hope to see as many people there to hear the items that we will be moving at the town meeting in June. And then we'll finish with the most exciting part, which is the minutes of the April 13 meeting, if we have that. But, so, we will open. Let's see, am I opening a public hearing? So we'd like to, sorry, we'd like to open the public hearing for site plan review for the Concord Children's Center under Section 11.8.7 of the zoning bylaw, to convert the existing single-family dwelling to a childcare center with reduced parking, construct a 7,063 square foot addition, and make related site improvements at 250 Old Bedford Road. So, thank you Elizabeth for sending out the town planners report, we do have that. I want to start with, we do have a board member, Ms. Orbital, she, I have received the conflict of interest form from her, and that has been filed, but Haley, if you just want to kind of make your statement to let everybody know, you know, what you put on the form that was filed.
Sure, yeah, I just stated that my son is attending CCC in West Concord, and, but I have had no involvement in the project, no financial interest, and he will be changing schools in the summer, so.
Well, thanks, and we appreciate that you're going to be able to be here and be part of the discussion. So the way that we'll do this is, we will have the applicant do a presentation, if they have one, so we can hear a little bit about the project. The Board will ask questions, so the applicant has a chance to answer that, and then we'll open that up to public comment. And we have received quite a bit of public comment already. My understanding is it's over 100 emails, and they're both in support and in opposition, so we have, we certainly have heard quite a bit already. If you sent in a comment after 4:00 PM today, we have not had a chance to post it yet, but it will be posted tomorrow. So that's, just so you know where the state of that is. So Elizabeth, if you want to hand the controls over to the applicant, we'd love to hear from them.
Okay, so I know Jennifer Brook is here, along with her team, so Jennifer, if you want to introduce your team for the Board, and then you will have screen share privileges.
Excellent, thank you Elizabeth. I'm actually going to give the privilege of introducing our team to John, to Pat, I'm actually going to let Pat Nelson speak first, but I will go ahead and share my screen, I will be driving tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and do that and turn the mic over.
Thank you Jennifer, and thank you to the finance, to the Planning Board for having us here tonight. I'm Pat Nelson, I'm the Executive Director at the Concord Children's Center, and a resident of Concord for 32 years. Concord Children's Center has been a fixture in Concord for 45 years, and in the neighborhood of 250 Old Bedford for 40 years. We're here tonight seeking permission to continue serving the families and children of this community through approval of our building project. While we will continue to serve West Concord with our school at 1300 Main Street, we needed to find a replacement for our classrooms located down the road from 250 at 120 Miriam Road and on the campus of Emerson Hospital, where we've been for 35 years. The town and the hospital informed us in 2019 that we could not renew our long-term leases as they had municipal needs for the space at Ripley and hospital plans for the space on the Emerson Campus. The property at 250 Old Bedford Road was found after a nearly two-year search that included looking at nearly 30 properties in Concord, including open space, town land, commercial spaces on Virginia Road and elsewhere, and residential spaces throughout Concord. The proximity to our current home at Ripley, the Ripley playscape, access to trails and nature, enough space for our program at a price we could afford, made 250 Old Bedford a desirable location. I will also add that being able to hook up to sewer was a very hard thing to find in Concord, and we have that ability at 250 Old Bedford. We've been a good neighbor at all of our locations over the 45 years we've been in Concord, and we look forward to continuing to do so. We have also served the children and families in Concord through our tuition assistance program. We are the only program that accepts vouchers in Concord, collaborations with the public schools and other private schools, the disability community, and other people-serving organizations. I just wanted to take this time to say that we have been very good citizens of Concord, and we come before you as such. I thank you for considering our application, and I will now turn the presentation over to John Brady, our attorney. And I do hope John Brady, our attorney, is here.
Hello.
Hey, John.
Hi, I had to, I'm not, I'm computer challenged, among other things. In any event, thank you Pat. Good evening, Madam Chairperson and Board Members and Town Staff. My name is John Brady, I'm an attorney with Dane Brady &amp; Hayden here in Concord, and we're here to present, all of us, the site plan review applications submitted by the Concord Children's Center, and to provide any additional information and clarification that may be requested to assist the Planning Board in its review. At the risk of repetition, and as stated in the town planners' report, the applicant is requesting to convert the existing single-family dwelling at 250 Old Bedford Road to a childcare center, including the addition of a barn-designed structure, parking lot, subsurface stormwater drainage, playground area, walkways, one-way driveway with exits, extensive site landscaping, fencing, and restoration of a wetland meadow, a portion of a wetland meadow. The project also includes a request for relief from the parking bylaw as stated in the application material from 33 spaces to 20 spaces. As the Board is aware, but maybe the general public is not, Master of Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, often called the Dover Amendment, states that no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit use of land or structures or expansion of existing structures for the primary purpose of operating a childcare facility. Of course, subject to reasonable regulation of the bulk height of structures, setbacks, open space, and parking. The applicant has taken special care to conform to the Concord bylaws in Section 4.3.2 and Section 11.8.7, Site Plan Review for Childcare Facilities, to the extent possible. The design team has also met with the neighbors to discuss the project and attempt to address and be respectful of all concerns raised. The site plan review application will be reserved by the following team members relating to their professional expertise. Dugan, also known as Woody Arthur, Architect of DW Arthur Associates Architecture, Inc., Jennifer Brook, Landscape Architect of Lemon Brook, Molly Obendorf, EIT of Stansky &amp; McNary, Inc., Kenneth P. Cram, PE, Director of Traffic Engineering at Bayside Engineering, as well as John Ammaral, Project Manager for Omni Properties LLC. I will be available to answer any questions that the Board or the public may have after the presentation. Thank you very much. Woody, I think you're up. Hello.
Mike, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, thank you John for the introduction. My name is Woody Arthur, I run an architecture practice that specializes in the design of environments for high-quality early education and young children. We have worked all over the country, but we're during COVID, running the practice from my home in the neighboring town of Lincoln. We've been very honored to work with Concord Children's Center for this, to develop this design for the new project at Old Bedford Road. And by way of just kind of a quick overview, I'm going to run you through some slides that Jennifer's going to drive to allow us to get familiar with the project. So Jennifer, if you could go to the next slide, that'd be great. So these are some images, the next couple of slides, you have some images of the existing site. And for those who aren't really familiar with it, there's an existing very traditional farmhouse on the property. It's three stories high, plus it's raised up above a full basement. It sits at the north end of a beautiful, extensive agricultural fields, and is characterized by being at the corner of Old Bedford and Virginia Road, and has some other things on the site, such as the shed that you can see in the upper left-hand corner here. Next slide. Here's some views of the site around the, particularly around the perimeter, some views of the sidewalks on Virginia Road, some fence lines at the abutters, you can see the shed in the lower left-hand image, as well as the right-hand image, along with some some residual concrete walls. Essentially, you can see the site's not particularly pristine right now, the house itself is in good shape, and Concord Children's Center intends to keep it in, and reuse it, and also in respect to the heritage of the neighborhood. These views helped, help illustrate a very significant part of the, of the site, which is this drainage ditch, which you can see in the upper right, kind of runs along the south edge of the property. And as we understand it, was created to help drain the fields in the spring, and has, over the years, become a wetland and considered a natural resource, which will need to take very careful consideration of as part of the planning. And for orientation, you can see in the top image on the right and the one on the left, the collection of old farm implements, which is probably, I'm guessing, a real landmark in the neighborhood, really quite wonderful. So this, this slide is an overview of the site, and let me walk you through what all these lines mean. First of all, you can see Old Bedford Road on the left, and Virginia Road branching off to the right. North is up, and the big fields are on the south, on the south side way off the screen. The site is roughly triangular in shape, and, and the property lines are shown with the black dashed lines. Once we've shown the setback, the typical front, side, and rear setbacks from the property lines, you can see there's sort of a building envelope that is depicted in the yellow kind of tone on this, on the site plan. And maybe more, even more significant are the magenta lines that illustrate the proximity to this drainage ditch wetland along the south property line. You can see that there's a 25-foot, 50-foot, and 100-foot setback, which have different levels of protection. The, significantly for this, the 50-foot setback is a no-build zone, so we've carefully situated the building so that it sits just outside of that. In addition to the program for the interior of the building, there's two other significant major components to this early childhood environment. One, of course, is the drive and parking, which you can see coming off of Virginia Road and then coming back out onto Old Bedford Road. And, and another kind of fundamental component of early education, of course, is getting children outside to age-appropriate playgrounds. So we've very, very carefully worked as a team to balance the allocation of the, of the available land between those three components, the building, the building itself, the parking and vehicular circulation, and the requisite playgrounds. So as we got into this, we worked closely with Concord Children's Center to develop a program, an architectural program, which includes six classrooms, administration, and support functions. And that quickly led us to understand that this project's really going to need a two-story addition to the house. And as we got into that, we started to think, well, what's appropriate to try to design a project here that would make sense in the neighborhood and in Concord in general? And we started looking at precedents, and, and Jennifer, if you could flip to the next slide, you'll see a very typical set of connected farmhouses that are not only common in Concord, but all over Greater New England. And this is a very traditional reflection of the agricultural history of Concord and the surrounding areas, and is characterized by what's typically called a front house, then the connected sort of outbuildings, often culminating in a barn that is oftentimes a larger and higher volume than the main house. And we looked to that as a, what seemed, appear, you know, it seems a very appropriate precedent, particularly given that the site is right at the, the north edge of that very broad set of fields, agricultural fields. So if you could move on, that'd be great. This is the first floor plan, just to give you a quick orientation through the building. The existing house is at the lower left-hand corner here, and then the new addition is the primary, the kind of barn structure is off to the right. We have a new entrance coming between the two, because it's critical to have one point of entrance for security and safety for the Children's Center. There'll be a director's office, a large multipurpose and community space. The youngest children are the three blue classrooms on the, on the ground floor. And what's, one of the critical aspects is to have direct access from those classrooms directly outside to age-appropriate playgrounds. And we've situated, so they also take advantage of the, the great daylight and views out over the field. If you go to the second floor, this shows that the older, the preschool children, three classrooms of threes, fours, and mixed age will be situated in the second level, accessed from a nice switchback stair, as well as from an elevator that'll serve all, all floors occupied by the Children's Center. Those classrooms, again, are organized to take advantage of the views, the daylight, and the proximity to the fields below. And Jennifer, thank you. So these are two of the four elevations, the lower one is the elevation facing west, this is towards Old Bedford Road, you can see on the right, the blue original farmhouse. And the additions are composed to defer to that farmhouse, you know, and again, in that very traditional massing approach that is typical of these connected farmhouses in New England. So there's a connector that's, that's sort of composed between, yes, the main house and the barn, and where you're pointing there, Jennifer, that's the main entrance, and you can see we've made some effort to reduce the scale with this composition with this long shed porch that creates a protected entrance for the main entrance, as well as some other shed roofs to help break down the scale, but also to provide some protection at the secondary entrances and accesses to the playground. These two elevations, the one on the top is facing east essentially, or southeast, and that's kind of a traditional, typical barn end. And you can see the connector, which is, is intended to be more glazed to allow a lot of daylight into a double-height space beyond. And, and then in the, the bottom elevation is the south side, looking out over the fields. You can see we have a much broader porch there that will help provide some shading and protection for the, from the elements for young children, which really appreciate these kinds of spaces that are in between the indoor classroom and the outdoor playgrounds, but it also helps to break down the scale of the building as well. I just, in summary, I'd just like to say, we've, we've endeavored to create an efficient and effective solution, satisfying the goals for a high-quality preschool, while being respectful of the heritage and character of the neighborhood and greater Concord. Thank you very much, and I think we're going to Jennifer.
That's correct, thank you Woody. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Brook, and I'm from Lemon Brook, we're the landscape architects on this project, we're here in Concord, a studio that's local. It is my job this evening, it's my pleasure actually, to, to take you on a quick tour through the site, now that Woody has taken you through the building. Once I take you on a tour of the site plan, I'll walk you through the plan really quickly. We'll stop and we'll touch on more specifically a few items that we thought would be of particular importance. The first being some of the peripheral boundaries and fencing. The second is lighting, we'll, we'll stop and talk about site lighting. And then we'll also speak briefly about the planting and some of the screening that we're going to be doing on the site. So first is the, is a walking tour. As, as Woody was saying, the, the project site is on the corner of Old Bedford and Virginia. Any one of you who've, who've driven past know, there's a very wide swath right at the intersection of space, which looks like it's contiguous with the property, but it's actually not. In this drawing, it's against the edge of the road, it's slightly darker green, and it's an arc that bends all the way around. That's actually the property of the town of Concord, there's a monument there, there's some trees there. There's an existing public sidewalk there that connects across Old Bedford Road with a fairly minimal crosswalk here. The parking lot is one way in, and the entrance is off of Virginia Road, so the parking is located on the northwest side, facing away and into towards the intersection. The exit is out of the parking lot onto Old Bedford Road. The entrance, as Woody was saying, is also at the northwest corner of the barn structure. The site plan does a pretty good job of showing you that the barn structure is fairly central to the plan. It's, it's in about as middle of the property as, as it could be located, with the wing that attaches to the existing farmhouse deer, here, looking out onto Old Bedford Road. There is a sidewalk that, that accompanies, it's adjacent to the parking lot here. It takes drop-off of, and parents and their children and their care providers over here to that main entrance, which is the one way in and out of the building to the public. That apron of hardscape, it's concrete, it wraps around the building. And as Woody had mentioned earlier, all of that is behind the 50-foot setback line. That has really been a guiding principle for us in the landscape and site development overall. The, the, the whole southern edge of the site, because of the old farm ditch turned wetland, is really, is really turning into a feature for, for the project. Everything behind that 25-foot setback line from the zero to the 25 is strictly a no-build zone. Currently, I don't know if you remember from the photographs, it's a mown, a mowed lawn currently. And so what we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about this in depth, but we are looking to highlight this area as a feature from, in the landscape, not just for the educational purposes, but also the ecological strategies here. And that green space that's all along the southern edge of the property, it wraps up and around onto the eastern side of the property. There are fairly strict setback rules here, and what you can see is between the setback and the building, again, wrapping around the east all the way along the south is where our play spaces, our outdoor play spaces are. There are two general areas, one up here, which is our infant and toddler spaces, and then we have a larger space, less constructed here at the bottom, along the southern side of the, of the property for the slightly older children. I'm, I'm going to leave it there, and I'll get into some more as we go forward. I'd like to talk specifically about the peripheral boundaries, we have some very specific edges, as you all know, in the neighborhood, one side it's roads and, and traffic, on the other, it's a neighborhood, and then on the southern side, the farm field. So they're very different scenarios for each of these, each of these edges. As you approach the property from Old Bedford Road, this is the existing farmhouse with existing trees. This is this wetland here, as it comes out to Old Bedford Road, you can see some of the parking towards the back. This is the view of the project direct from the, the center of the intersection, looking back at the property. I'll ask you to, just to take note, there's a couple of different things you can see here, mainly that we're trying to screen all of the parking, particularly if it is evening, we cut out any and all headlight light from the parking lot out into the intersection and generally create a more pleasing appearance. And then this is the entrance into the, into the space, into the parking lot. There are three different fence types that you can see in this image, there's the low privacy, there's a high privacy, and then there's the, the security gate, the security fence between the, the parking lot and the play area. To make this a little easier to follow along, this is a plan that shows some of those various borders, these edges between these spaces. We have two specific types, there's the privacy fence I was just describing. There's one here, it's called A2, and it's along the eastern side of the property, and it wraps around this area of the trash enclosure, and then there's this one that's called A1, which is around the parking. A1 is low and a privacy fence, A2 is high and a privacy fence. Currently, we're showing it as six feet, and we've been talking about the possibility of raising that to eight feet. So those are the only two that are actually on the property line, or as close to the property line as we can get it. All of the other fencing really is interior, and is really meant for safety, security, the children. There's this one right here, between the parking and, and the play area, and then there's an internal fence in here. And there's one that's called B1, and that's a little more solid, and again, that's at the, that's on the interior of the property, and it is at the setback line, everything behind that is planted. And then there's this fence at the bottom, which is C, and that is more whimsical, and that's really more of an agricultural expression. I'm going to show you some imagery here, the privacy fences, if I can draw your attention to the image here in the lower center, this is the adjacent abutting fence to the property, and we've taken our cues from that. That's a six-foot-high privacy fence that we could turn and run down the side of the, of the property, as though we're thinking it, in terms of privacy at this level. The low fence is what you're seeing across the top, those are some options that are fairly similar. When it comes to the fencing between, on the interior, between the parking, this is more of a security fence between parking and play area. These are some options, you can see they're much more transparent, they don't have privacy but security in mind as a primary goal. And then there's the fencing between the wetland area, the setback area, and the exterior play areas for the, for the center. Again, the split rail, something more agricultural, and with a, with a gate in it, so that supervised walks can happen back on that property. Lighting, so this is slightly different rendering than the, than the image that you have in your pocket. The image that you have in your pocket is the collection of lighting points, it's a photometric plan that's done on a grid. Sometimes the grid lines up with the lighting fixture, sometimes it doesn't, and it can be misleading. So what we did is we've interpolated, we've actually connected all these dots, and what it shows you where the, the lightest color is, that's where the most light is, and then it fades out to zero at the edges of the property. There are three lighting fixture types, one is for the parking lot, and there are three lighting fixtures in the parking lot, one, two, and three. That same fixture will be used but mounted on the wall back here over the, over the basement door. There's another type of fixture, it's a ceiling fixture, it's a downlight, it's located in the soffit of the porch. There's another type of fixture, it's a ceiling fixture, it's a downlight, it's located in the soffit of the porch at the existing building and around the building here at the front uh entrance here and then along the porch. There's a third light fixture and that is a low step light, it's mounted in the wall at two and a half feet above the grade, and that's what you're seeing is B. All of the lighting that's around the building, this whole area here, the reason this lighting exists is for emergency egress pathway lighting. That is really the only reason that that lighting exists. It's so that if people are leaving the building under duress uh in darkness, that there is a way for them to see the pathway. So all of these fixtures have been chosen to create the the light on the pathway, the pathway only, there's no intention to light any other um features out in the landscape or for any other reason. These are the actual fixture cut sheets, these are these cans, you can see them. These are dimmable if we if we want them to be dimmable. These are the wall fixtures, again, these are mounted two and a half feet above the ground and meant just to wash the ground plain for egress, and then this is a a version of the parking lot light, again, looking for something that has a little bit more of that barnyard or industrial character to to fit with that agricultural aesthetic. So I'm getting close to the end here, I want to talk about um planting. So this site, uh this project is um not subject to the tree preservation bylaw as it is a project that is undergoing site plan review. However, um what we did is we used the uh provisions of the tree preservation bylaw to evaluate the project and evaluate the the setback here and in terms of what was happening. So I'm going to show you this diagram, I think it makes it pretty easy to see. Everything that's in bright green are trees that are remaining, those are trees that we're working hard to save and can save in the project. There's three trees in in a brownish color, this dark brown color. Again, a quick drive by the site will tell you those are some good sized trees, but they have seen better days, they are not in very good health. Um and that's pretty obvious to the eye, those are in poor condition. The red trees are trees that are invasive, those are all Norway maples. And there are three down here um in the wetland area that are not necessarily impacted by the project as a whole. Obviously, these are impacted because we want to put the parking here. But down here, it, you know, we're working with our natural resources um commission, we we think it's a good idea, I think. And we've been told they they think it's a good idea um that we remove those trees as well because they will reseed and it causes a problem for maintaining drainage in this area and this bioswell down here. So what that does leave is it leaves us these two yellow trees, they are um they are the victims in this case, um a larch up here and a a fairly a fairly uh wind blown pear down here along the edge now. This is only the trees that are coming uh out, there is a significant amount of um vegetation going back in. As I was showing you earlier, there's a there's an entire edge along the eastern side that is planted for screening. I'm going to show you a little bit more detail here of the wetland area. Right now, it's a turf, it's a lawn that's mowed from the property edge all the way down through to the wetland. We would like to see that planted as a meadow and we've specified a meadow mix, we'd like to see that grow tall, we'd like to mow pathways through it so that children can be guided with adults out to say vegetable gardens over here on the left. We're proposing that the the whole swale in this area be replanted. The pallet, the plant pallet for the entire project is native. So that not only can we uh provide a learning opportunity for the for the program, but we're also improving the the health for pollinators um for for drainage um and overall the the system here. I'm going to now, since we're starting to talk about water and and drainage, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Molly Obendorf, Molly is from Stamsky McNary and is our civil engineer, and she's going to talk about stormwater management.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good evening, my name is Molly Obendorf and I work with Stamsky McNary. Jennifer said I am the site engineer and will give an overview of the stormwater and overall layout of the site, much of which Woody and Jennifer mentioned in their presentations. The building and parking lot locations were thoughtfully laid out to accommodate the existing constraints of the site. And a lot of care and detail from the design team you have before you went into the design of the site and associated entities to best serve its intended use. The site is accessible throughout and as Jennifer mentioned, there's sidewalks that have been provided throughout the site. Um and the remaining open space will be utilized as play space for the children and restoration of the adjacent resource area. Currently, as the site exists, um does not provide any stormwater management to contain or control runoff leaving the site. Um and as part of the design of this project is to provide stormwater management, which internally actually improve upon existing conditions for the site. Extensive drainage calculations have been done to ensure that the post-development conditions do not worsen due to the increased impervious area on site. Subsurface infiltration is being provided for both the building as well as the parking lot. There are two subsurface infiltration beds both situated under the parking lot. Um, one of which will service the roof runoff and one of which will service the parking lot runoff, meaning any runoff from the parking lot and any runoff from the roof will be captured and contained on site. The proposed stormwater management system designed for the site will actually decrease the runoff leaving the site compared to existing conditions. And again, my my presentation's very brief, Woody and Jennifer did an excellent job explaining the project and going through it. And just to touch upon one more thing, as Jennifer said, the parking lot is a one-way parking lot. Vehicles will enter from Virginia Road and will exit out onto Old Bedford Road. And with that, I will turn it over to Ken Cramm, is the um traffic engineer for the project.
Thank you, Molly. Good evening. My name is Ken Cram, I'm a registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um and we were approached uh about a year ago now, maybe a little longer to look at the traffic impacts of the uh Concord Children's Center. And as you heard, uh two of their facilities, um their leases are not being renewed, so they needed new space. So they're looking to build upon uh the existing site at the corner of Old Bedford Road and Virginia Road. We went through and performed a a full uh complete traffic impact and access study, uh which has been submitted to the town. That traffic study, uh the town has sent it out for a peer review. And that review is not completed yet, but is expected to be completed prior to the next hearing. Um and we expect to uh work with them and address their comments um at that time. As we talked about, I'll talk about the school programs when we get to it, but um we looked at uh the two intersections, Old Bedford Road and Virginia Road and Old Bedford Road and Miriam Road, which is just off this uh current diagram uh to the right. We did traffic counts uh in March of last year. And those counts were done. Covid was in place, but the uh the uh the 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 government hadn't officially shut down everyone until the end of the month. So we believe our our counts are representative of the conditions at that time. Going forward, none of us traffic engineers have a crystal ball. We don't know what's going to happen uh in the future, there's been a lot of discussion. It's been the topic of many a conversation at many of our technical meetings as to what's going to happen in the future. A lot of people uh are working from home now. Um and we're anticipating that uh it's likely that even when the pandemic is completely over that uh that pattern will continue. Uh in terms of what we've seen uh historically over the past year, we have not seen any specific projects for office developments. We've seen a lot of residential, uh some small commercial and uh industrial warehouse type uh projects being the major projects we've seen in the last year. But what we did do is um we did seasonally adjust our traffic volumes. They were slightly lower than the average month. And uh based on our data, Old Bedford Road uh south of Virginia Road carried about fifty four hundred cars a day and Virginia Road east of Villa, excuse me. East of Philip Farm Road carried about thirty nine hundred cars per day. As part of our study, uh we also gathered uh speed data for the two roads in the vicinity of the where the uh the site driveways were going to occur. Because we need to use that data when we assess site distances. Both roads have posted speed limits of thirty miles per hour. And it was interesting to note that the average speed that we found, and this was based on two days of data, was right around, right at the uh posted speed limit or just below it. We found that on Old Bedford Road southbound, the eighty fifth percentile speed was about seven miles per hour above the posted speed limit. Um and this, you know, begs the age old question about uh enforcement. We run into this with every every project. When we say, you know, let's get more enforcement out there and the police department turns around and says, well, we just don't have enough people to go out there and monitor it on a daily basis, so we try and work with the local police departments when we can to offer suggestions and maybe there's ways that um, you know, right now, this is a, this is the speed right now that it needs to be addressed, um it's not something that's created by the project. We looked at um uh future, uh not future, excuse me. We looked at as part of the study, uh crashes at the intersection, you went too far, go back please. Thank you. We looked at uh a crash history, we contacted the Concord Police Department. We asked them for any crash data at either of the two intersections and the the results of our studies are based on data provided by the police department. There may have been more crashes, but uh if there were, they may have been, you know, less than where the the uh cost to repair the vehicle was less than a thousand dollars. The people may have decided not to report the crash and simply work together to fix the damage individually. But in from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, uh one crash was reported at the intersection of Miriam Road and Old Bedford Road. And then there's no fatalities involved in the intersection either. So we go to look at the the future now. As I indicated, when we prepared the traffic study, we followed the state guidelines. We projected out a seven-year planning horizon, which is uh in the MAST DOT uh guidelines for the preparation of traffic impact assessments. We talked to the town about background projects and we talked to uh CTPS, the Central Transportation Planning Staff, uh which is the uh the traffic engineering arm, I call it, uh of the Metropolitanary Planning uh Commission, MayPAC, which provides data on all kinds of traffic growth in various areas. And they estimated for this part of Concord that a reasonable background growth rate would be half a percent of compounded annual growth per year. We used a one percent growth rate, uh just to be a little conservative. And in terms of background projects, nothing significant was identified. But there were three single family homes uh approved at four thirty Old Bedford Road. And uh we generated traffic for them and added them into our background projections. Uh next slide, please. The next thing we looked at um was data from uh Concord uh Children's Center on what uh what their operations are, what their operations are supposed to be, which are very similar, are not no significant change. As indicated, they're moving uh some classroom space from two other locations and they're consolidating it into this single location. So and they've had, they've collected data over the past three or four years. So they have a really good handle on what their site generates and uh how they operate. And what's shown here in the first column is uh we took that information and based on that information and the arrival times that are anticipated to come up with the daily and peak hour traffic generation. Um and you know, it shows uh as pretty much we expect forty-five cars would come in in the morning and thirty-eight would come out based on their data for a total of eighty-three, and the evening peak hour, there are twenty-eight cars would come in and thirty-seven would leave. Now, we compared that information with data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They published a trip generation manual, uh we are currently on the tenth uh edition of that manual, it's all electronic now, it's available online for a fee unfortunately. But it comprises all kinds of land uses from single family homes to shopping centers to big office parks and so forth. And so we, the comparable uh land use code, which was um daycare center, land use code five sixty-five, we looked at what that's would generate for an enrollment of ninety uh students. And it came very close to what was projected based on um the Concord Children's Center data. As you can see, the IT says the same one would generate seventy trips in the morning peak hour compared to eighty-three. And the evening peak hour, it would generate seventy-one trips compared to sixty-five based on the Concord Children's Center data. So what we did was in our analysis, we took the higher of the two uh to look at the impacts of the project. So we were projecting eighty-three to seventy-one vehicle trips um during the one, the peak hour. I should say the peak hour is uh defined as uh the one hour typically between seven and nine AM in the morning and the uh between four and six, four and six thirty PM uh in the afternoon peak hour, peak period. That tells you uh when the uh when the peak hour is, it's the four highest consecutive fifteen minute intervals. So we have our traffic generation, the next thing we do is we look at where they're coming to and going from. I don't have a table for this, but uh Concord Children's Center provided us with zip code information for their existing student base. Um and we took that information, um looked at, you know, where those homes were based on zip codes um and then came up with a trip pattern. And basically, we found sixty-two percent uh would come from the north on Old Bedford Road, forty-six percent from the south and two percent from the east on Virginia Road. So we have our trip issue, trip to trip distribution pattern, we have our traffic. What we do is simply do the math, multiply it out and add that traffic on top of the no build numbers and we get our build traffic numbers and we do our capacity analyses. And uh as traffic engineers, um just like you were in grade school, uh when you um analyzing the intersection, uh A being good, F being bad, um just like in school. We found that uh under the future uh conditions, all of the study area intersections would operate at a level service D or better uh during the peak hours, uh which is considered acceptable uh for these types of conditions. Now, the one thing we also looked at, um and this, uh excuse me, one second, please. We looked at the parking on the site as well. Currently, uh we are proposing twenty parking spaces on the site. Um and so based on the data that we have relative to the CCC operations, we looked at when, you know, teachers arrive on the site, when do parents drop off children at the site? And we put that into a a spreadsheet model and it's in the traffic study. And they they the uh arrivals start early in the morning, uh it's uh between seven and nine is when uh the arrivals will occur. And in the afternoon, um they actually start leaving at noon time, twelve-thirty-ish uh up until about six PM. And in the afternoon, they actually start leaving at noon time, twelve thirty ish, up until about six PM. The data indicated that anywhere from two to four families generally arrive at any given time. But we've allocated allowed for that to even be higher by providing, as you saw on the site plan a few slides ago. We have six spots that will be utilized during the peak period time, which is probably going to happen during the morning around nine o'clock. And the way it operates is, you know, you arrive on the site and the teachers will come and get your child from your car and take them into the building. So that you don't have to go into the building and turn over and take up parking spaces on the site. And you can continue, continue back to your home or to your office or whatever your primary purpose of that trip was. They have had in the past an after school program where there was up to eighteen children participating in that program. And they would generally be picked up between four and six PM in the afternoon. It is not known at this time if that's going to continue, but it's going to all be a function of how the, the economy, how parents feel and so forth. It's, it's a whole bunch of factors go into it. And there'll have to be some serious planning about that. The CCC does have, and they've worked with the Ripley School. They have two spaces for overflow parking there if they do need it. And typically during throughout the year, the CCC will host three or four late afternoon or evening events. And, excuse me. They have also talked with the Ripley about using the Ripley School parking lot for overflow parking. As you can see here, it's a short walk, about two tenths of a mile from the parking lot to the Children's Center where it's proposed. And so the last thing I just want to talk about, and I think I have covered everything is earlier, we talked about the speeds and why we have the eighty fifth percentile speed. And that is used when we assess site distances at either existing or proposed driveways. In the, in our case, you know, Old Bedford Road will be the exit to the site. And so we looked at it and we have well more than what is required by ASJO, the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, which has developed a set of formula to determine what you need for stopping site distance. And of course, it's based on speed and the mass of the vehicle acceleration and so forth. And we can see here that from this chart, we have very good sight lines to and from the proposed exit driveway on Old Bedford Road. So that's the summary of the traffic study as like I said, the town has set it out for peer review. We expect comments because not even I am perfect. And we will work with the town and its peer reviewer to address those comments and any comments from the public as we move ahead. And thank you.
Thank you. Have we heard from everyone from the applicant so far? Okay, great. Well, I appreciate that, that thorough presentation, it was nice to hear all of the aspects. I'm going to ask the board to hold their questions on this for just a few minutes. I'd like to, and if, if the applicant doesn't mind as well, because I don't want to shortchange this discussion. We have another item on the agenda at seven thirty. And I think it's going to be quite brief by comparison. And so I, I would like to ask the board and the applicant to please hold on just for a moment. I'd like to switch over to the BOA application so we can do that about the lighting. It should take, I think, less than fifteen minutes and then we will come right back and the board can ask everybody the Concord Children's Center applicants before we open that up for public comment, so. I will just put that on hold for a minute, thank you for your patience. And is the applicant for BOA on the line, I believe I saw him.
Yes, we are here, this is Charles Ganyu, I'm the president and CEO of Volunteers of America, Massachusetts, thank you, Kristin. I'd just like to start briefly thanking the board for placing on the agenda. As you can imagine, we've been going through a construction renovation phase of Concord Park, which is an assisted living community, which we're very proud of. So it's been a very challenging year, as you can imagine. But we've done everything we can to support safety and provide high quality care for our residents. And I wanted to thank both the planning department, the building department, the Board of Health and the Fire and Police, because they've been fantastic to work for and with. And we had to be very creative to keep things going. And I'm pleased that we're here tonight to talk briefly about our lighting plan. So I, I know you guys have a lot of things you want to talk about regarding the Children's Center, we'll try to be brief. I'd like to introduce our team briefly. We have Joan Eagleson and Scott Timmons from La Valley Brenzinger Architects. They are the lead designers and project architects. And we also have Mark Bowdre, who is the lead engineer and the vice president of Meridian Associates. So Kristin, if we can move forward, I'd like to have Mark begin presenting a high level summary of our request. Mark, are you on there?
Yes, I am, Charles, thank you. And Chairwoman, members of the board, thank you for hearing us tonight, Mark Bowdre from Meridian Associates. I can share a screen if you, if you'd like, I can put it, put a plan up, but the, why don't I go ahead and do that real quick? This is an older plan, just bear with me for a second here. All right, so. Here is the overall site plan, if you can see this, the Concord Park facility. And access is off Commonwealth Ave and it's through the, the commuter rail parking lot. And comes into the, the development site. So of the Concord Park Assisted Living. And right at the main drop off area, at the main entrance of the building, which is right here, there's going to be a new canopy proposed that will extend from the, the main, the main entry, extend over the drop off to the, to the island with, to create a, like a port to share type approach. And the that canopy is going to have a series of lighting underneath it now. I in it, the, the lighting is really minimal to be essentially provide a safe environment for the, the older folks that might be, you know, gaining access at night in here. Maybe going outside to get some air or whatever. And we wanted to uncover of, for, so we'd have all season functionality here, all weather functionality. And Scott or Joan can talk to you more about the canopy and the lighting specifics. But I wanted to just clarify one thing that was in Elizabeth's use re- report. I think she said that, that eighteen lightning fixtures are being added, there's actually seventeen or eighteen, I, we had seventeen, I, I take, I trust her number. But there's also other lighting that's going to be removed. So the net increase is only, is only a, a total of nine lights on the site. But still, when you take that number and divide by the, the, the existing number of lights on the site, I think we're increasing by about thirteen percent. So we would be, we, that, that obviously is over the ten percent. So we're triggering the site plan review. And so what I'd like to do is maybe turn this over quickly to, I, I think Scott Timmons might be of La Valley Brennitzer, might be, have some, some plans available that he could show the board real quick on on, on the lighting, I've got those also here that I could call up if, if appropriate. So Scott, you want to take the wheel?
Sure.
Thanks, Mark. Share.
All right. So what we have here is a, is a photometric plan of, of the front canopy. So this is, this space back here is the, is the main building. This is our canopy coming out towards the, towards the little pullout driveway. And these blue lines indicate the number of indirect LED light fixtures that are being proposed for inside the canopy. So as part of the recommended industry standard lighting levels for scene with living facilities generally range for exterior entrances generally range between five to ten foot candles. And foot candles is just a measure of, of brightness for that, that the lights are giving. For our canopy, our lighting levels in the canopy from the perimeter, we have a range from about five foot candles at the perimeter to about a high point of about eight kind of dead center of the canopy. And then it, it's pretty evenly distributed and pretty sharply falls off beyond the, beyond the, the level of the canopy. So we do fall within the recommended ranges. And that's about it in a, in a brief nutshell.
In addition to Scott, if I could add to that, as indicated in the Elizabeth's report, the, we anticipate that the lighting will fall off the foot candles to zero. You know, I think I estimated roughly fifteen feet, Elizabeth, I think called it out as ten in her report, which is fine. Scott, if you could just pan down to the plain bottom there, oh, okay, it's, it's not shown, but right on the island is a, is a proposed sign that will also have you know, a project identification sign that will have new down lighting on it, mounted to the top, mounted to the sign. So in addition to the canopy lights, we're also looking at the, the addition of those two lights on that sign right now as proposed. So that's all part of the, the application, you know, that was submitted to the, to the board for, for review. And we do have, I think, copies of the, the lighting fixtures to show you if, if the board's interested in seeing those, but they're all LED. And night dark sky compliant, et cetera. So I, I think it's going to be a, you know, a real, a real nice addition to the Concord Park facility. We, we do have, just to avoid any confusion, we, we did have at one point, we were talking about a couple signs offsite that went out at Concord, Commonwealth Ave and then one at, at the, at the parking lot split. But those signs are not on the table right now. We're only talking about the, that the signage is, and the lighting associated with the new canopy and the new sign at the canopy on site.
Great, well, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to the board first to ask the applicant any questions. And then I can open it up to public comment about this project as well. So is there anyone from the board that has questions for the applicant? Yes, Linda?
Yes, I just wanted to ask if the canopy height would allow, say, a council on aging van to approach, approach the building and pick up passengers?
Absolutely. It's actually designed, we, in conjunction with the Concord Fire Department, to make sure one of their apparatus could actually get under the canopy as well, an ambulance, et cetera, so. And I would, sir, excuse me. I would think that the council and aging van certainly can get under there. In fact, Concord Park has a shuttle van as well that will be able to get under there as well. So the, yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
That's a good thing we are discouraging is UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, that, the like from getting under there. What the, the canopy that's proposed is actually being set higher than the existing canopy. Because that can, the existing canopy has actually been hit several times by delivery trucks who were not supposed to be there, but they go there anyway. And we're really discouraging that used to be dropped outside of the, the canopy outside the island.
Thanks. Other questions? I'm gonna find the board member, so you might have to speak up if I can't see you all at the same time. I don't have any questions, I'm not hearing any other questions. We did see the report from the town planner and the, and the documents you submitted. I would open it up to public comment for this project. And to make a public comment, you would hit the raise hand function. And then we would call on you, you would state your name and address for the record. I realize that many of you are not necessarily here for this project, but I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to comment if you'd like or ask any questions. I see one question or one raised hand, Michael Riley. We're gonna allow you to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Michael Riley, I live at ninety three Kenny Lane, just off of Philip Farm, off of Virginia Road. And I'm really questioning that traffic flow pattern.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Riley, I, I, it sounds like you might be, let me excuse you, excuse me. It sounds like you might be talking about the Concord Children's Center. And, and I absolutely will give you time to talk about that, I just want to wrap up, I, I had to interject this one. So I, I will, I will come back to that. Sorry to cut you off, but we want to, want to hear you soon. Were there any other comments about this lighting plan for BOA that was just a conquered part, from the public? All right, seeing none, and I'll give it another few seconds, I would entertain a motion from a board member. So we can kind of wrap that up, this is for their site plan review under section eleven point eight to increase exterior lighting fixtures.
I'm happy to make a motion, Kristin.
Thank you.
Please do. I propose that the board approve the application of BOA Concord Assisted Living under section eleven point eight of the zoning bylaw to increase exterior lighting pictures on a site greater than ten percent of the existing amount at sixty at Commonwealth Avenue parcel two one nine eight for the, the plans submitted to the town planner.
Thanks, let me just make sure, Elizabeth, did we capture that correctly?
That was fine, thank you.
Okay, is there a second? That was Nathan's second, all right, let me go around, Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Bosette?
Yes.
Ms. McInity?
Yes.
Ms. Orvital?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. So with that, thank you to the applicant for making a concise presentation. We're glad we could get you closer to the seven thirty mark. And I'd like to return to the public hearing already in, in progress for the Concord Children's Center.
Madam Chair, I would just like to say thank you for that positive vote. We've been transparent through the whole project, we will continue and hopefully we can invite everyone on the call to a grand ribbon cutting sometime in early twenty twenty two. So thank you.
Great, well, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much, have a great night, everybody.
Thanks. All right, turning back to Concord Children's Center, we had just, if you're just tuning in, we had just concluded, the applicant had just concluded their presentation. And so the board has had a chance to kind of think about some of the items that were presented to us. We did, as I mentioned, we did receive quite a bit of public comment, more than we were able to get on the site. We'll get the rest of it on the, on the website tomorrow. Much of what we heard questions about was related to traffic. So we, we know that's something that we're going to learn more about. And to remind everyone, there is, as, as mentioned, there is a consultant reviewing the traffic study as well. So we, we've got that information. So let me start with the board members. What questions do you have for the applicants, please? And again, you might have to speak up because I can't see you all at the same time.
Yep, this, this is Nathan. One question I have is in all the discussion and presentation, which thank you for, for doing that. You didn't mention what the, what's going to be in the existing structure, what, what are the plans for, for that?
I'll take that, this is Pat.
I'll take that. This is Pat Nelson. At this point, the existing structure is going to be administrative offices, planning spaces for teachers to use and meeting rooms for teachers to use when they meet with families. We, as Ken alluded to, we have been running an after school program for since the beginning of Concord Children's Center for the last 45 years. But last year, due to COVID, and this coming year, we will not be running that after school program. We don't know if we will be able to run the after school program. It will depend upon if the schools would continue to provide transportation from the elementary school Alcott over to to 250 Old Bedford. If we are able to run the after school program, it would be it would take place on the first floor of the existing building. Those children arrive around 3:30 on a bus. And we would have probably, we're thinking that program will be quite small because the recreation department will continue to run after school programs in the elementary schools. So this would probably be the families who have preschoolers or infants at the children's center and kindergartners at the elementary school. So we're thinking this would be around a 12 children after school program. But as I said, we're not, we don't know if that that is what we will be doing. If we do not use the first floor for an after school program, it would be used for perhaps some overflow space or play space from the from the the main building, from the barn or additional offices and conference rooms.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
This is Kate. I have a couple of questions. I have three questions, actually. The the first question is, are you proposing any new striping on the cross crosswalks going across Old Bedford or Virginia?
It's not part of our proposal, and I'm not sure that would be in our purview. I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on that.
So I guess I'll amend my question a little bit, but are those crosswalks? Maybe this is a question for the traffic engineer, but are those crosswalks or the surrounding infrastructure adequate to for children and teachers walking from the site, for example, over to back to Ripley?
This is Ken Cram again. Yeah, the crosswalks appear to be adequate. I mean, the only thing I noticed when I was out there is there is only a sign right at the crosswalk indicating that there is a crosswalk right at that location. Sometimes what you will see, particularly when you have a school in the area, is you'll have two or 300 feet north or south and advanced crosswalk ahead sign, something to alert the motorists to the fact that there is a crosswalk ahead.
Okay, so my second question is related to the traffic flow. And Mr. Cram mentioned that right now, as the intersection is performing very well. So I guess my question is, of course, right now, there's this is going to impact the traffic flow with people breaking to to turn into the site. So I guess my question is just a general one in terms of how would that impact the traffic flow when people are having to stop and maybe, for example, to turn left from Virginia Road into the site, and will that create a backup? Or, you know, vice versa, with congestion in this site, how will that impact the rest of traffic flow that uses those routes to commute to Hanscombe, for example?
It's the let's take a traffic arriving from Old Bedford Road first. It's no different than any other intersection. I do believe that probably what happened here, as you heard described earlier, that there is a significant amount of green space that is owned currently by the town of Concord. And I have to believe that originally, the original alignment of Virginia Road into Old Bedford Road was more of an angle than what it is today at a 90 degree turn. But as I'm, you know, probably what happened is someone recognized that and said, hey, let's try and make this safer. Because let's force the cars to slow down to turn right and make it a standard 90 degree intersection, which is the way the intersection is today. And you look at it, any traffic, as we said earlier, the our arrivals are staggered over a two hour period in the morning. And it's not going to be any different than a car coming around and making a right turn. It's going to have to slow down when it makes a turn. And if you're a parent that's going into the facility, you will just travel the 100 feet or so, whatever it is, and turn right into the parking field. Coming from Virginia Road, the conflicting volume of traffic for a left turn is not significant. The projected volume, and I know we will be verifying these volumes, but let me just try and find the conflicting volume in the morning, you're going to have one car turning against 500. So that one car may experience a little bit of delay. But because the vehicle is turning right, will be also slowing the traffic down. It's going to create some gaps for opposing traffic on Virginia Road. So I don't see that as a as a concern. Plus, the volume to capacity ratio, which is another method of how we assess an intersection, if it's well less than one, we're doing great. And I'm looking at the VC ratio for the left turn movements from, let's see here. I'd have to look in the analyses. I don't have that handy here right now because it's an entrance only driveway. But I gotta believe it's well less than one. So when you have a VC volume to capacity ratio that's significantly less than one, it tells us the traffic engineer that there's adequate capacity to handle that particular movement.
Okay, thank you. With regard to the parking, I understand that the center is asking for relief from parking requirements, and you are you you have 20 spaces allotted now. It looks like you have 18 teachers and two, a director and another administrator. So that seems so that's 20. So where like if you have visitors come, for example, that are going to come and park and visit, you know, they're getting a tour of the center, prospective clients. Or if you end up needing more teachers for some reason, I mean, you have not, you have no buffer. So how do you accommodate these other needs?
Well, as we indicated, we have the overflow for we have at least two parking spaces over at the Ripley School that if it becomes a problem, we can use those. We do.
If I could just address that, Kate, the the way the the parking lot works is that we don't have all 18 teachers in the parking lot from seven to six. There are arrival times for the teachers. So, you know, for example, you you might have two teachers in the building at seven, and then that may go up to I have to find my cheat sheet because I'm not. So you may go up to four teachers at 7:30, and then you have six teachers at eight and six teachers at 8:15. At that time, families are also arriving in staggered schedules. So throughout the morning from seven till nine, teachers are coming into the parking lot in staggered schedules. And families are coming in on staggered schedules. So we looked at our enrollments over the last three years and then enrollments for this year and enrollments projected for next year. And sort of studied how and when families come in, what percentage of our families enroll at what particular times in order to assess what the likelihood is of the number of families in the parking lot at any given time. And because we have all of these different enrollment times, families are really coming in at very different times during the day. Your build families sign up for a 7 o'clock pickup or a 7:30 pickup, a 7 o'clock drop off or a 7:30 drop off or an 8 o'clock drop off or an 8:30 drop off. And then they arrive at various times in those half hour periods, which we've which we've looked at. And in fact, over this past year, we we actually did a sort of an analysis and a over at West Concord because we were checking families in for COVID, we're able to to really kind of time the the arrivals and departures of families. So looking at all of that, we're very structured in the scheduling of our staff, very structured in the scheduling of when families drop off and pick up. We feel very confident that we would never need more than 20 23 spaces, maybe, maybe on a, you know, 24. But we have the six car queues that would accommodate those extra those families that might come in at at the peak times. And those peak times are sort of between 8 and 8:30 and 12:30 and 1, when we have the majority of our teachers in the parking lot and families arriving at the same time. But we have those six queued up spaces. And during those periods of time, there will be staff people bringing children out to or picking up children from those cars that are using the queue. So we've got a pretty tight plan. And and I'll say that, you know, we've been doing this over in West Concord and at Ripley and at Emerson for 40 plus years. We have a pretty good idea of how families arrive and depart. And we can structure it. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thanks very much. And that that concludes my my questions, Kristin.
Thank you. Questions, Nathan, Burton, Alan? Haley, do you guys have questions?
First, I've got a couple of questions. First, for Mr. Cram, you mentioned that peak hour, the the intersection had a D grade. What would the grade be without the addition of this of this facility at that location?
It would be Old Bedford Road, Virginia, it would be a C. It's just under the threshold at a C. And by adding the additional traffic, it goes over the threshold based on the methodology and the additional incremental traffic and and the mathematical model that we use. It's called synchro, but it's based on the Transportation Research Board and the Federal Highway Administration, the current edition, the 10th edition of the 10th edition, no, 10th or sixth, I forget which, of the highly capacity manual. And, you know, we're talking adding and, you know, we're at 24 seconds for a level service C, and we're at 30 seconds for a level service D on average. So that was the morning peak hour. So that we're talking adding six seconds of average delay. In the evening, it goes from 23 seconds to 28 seconds. So that's five seconds on average for an increase. So it's you get, we're just crossing over the threshold line from a level service C to a level service D.
And and does that take into account any improvement that may happen as a result of this traffic shifting to this intersection of the Virginia Road from which essentially the children's center traffic that's currently going down to the Ripley School at the at the immediately adjacent.
This 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 accounts for in the build condition, yes.
Okay. All right. And then my my second question, and I think is as for the site engineer and the landscape architect, we got the initial memo from the town engineer suggesting that the entrances needed to be, or at least one entrance needed to be moved. And I'd be curious for your initial feedback on whether that's feasible in terms of yours, your site planning.
Yeah, I can speak to that. And I'll even work with Stamsky McNary. That was a comment from the engineering department to look at the exit driveway and and basically push it right up against the 50 foot setback. That's not ideal. And for the reasons such as, you know, NRC has certain setbacks to abide by, the 50 foot no build zone that, you know, we're trying to work with them and and, you know, accommodate those setbacks. Additionally, you know, the the house is a, it's not a historic house, but it's, you know, been there for a long time. And we feel it's important from a planning viewpoint to maintain the lawn and residential character immediately between Old Bedford and the front facade of the farmhouse. And additionally, for that, that is our majority snow storage area. So it would take away the snow storage area, moving it over. And, you know, Ken has gone through the site distances and everything complies with that. So we feel having the exit drive in the spot that it is, is best suited for the site. And I will work with engineering to to accommodate that.
And my last question or comment that would be for for Pat, Pat, I know there's precedent, for example, with Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee in improving signage around crosswalks. I'm not actually sure if they've done that in Concord, but I know they have in in, you know, Acton and Westford, Chelmsford. I'm wondering if, you know, many of the comments that we got and I and for the audience, I did go through and read all, I think it's spread to 108 letters prior to this meeting went to the problems with existing conditions and whether or not your this facility would add to those problems or or not. There's it's clear that people have a problem with existing conditions in it. And it seems reasonable to assume there'll be some more demand on that crosswalk. And I'm wondering if that's something you would consider is is I know the comment was made that it's maybe not within your purview, but consider engaging with the town on on ways that signage, including perhaps, you know, a lighted crosswalk sign or something like that could be put in there.
Absolutely. And that's something, you know, when we first started to to look at the the site and had some discussion with some of the town town staff, that it was suggested that that was something that would be nice to have at the at that intersection. And we would be very open to and willing to work with the town and the neighborhood to try to have a one of those flashing like the one at Walden Pond. And I think there's one, Jennifer has mentioned that she has one across from her neighborhood that accommodates the rail trail, Jennifer.
Actually, we're trying to get one in our neighborhood and working with engineering now. It's a neighborhood effort, to be clear. Pat, there's one where the the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail crosses, I think it's Old Marlboro Road in West Concord.
So there, so there are precedents for that. And we would certainly be be very open to that. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Pat. Those are all my questions, Kristin. Thank you.
Can I piggyback on what Burton's comment there? I was just wondering if we know whether recommendations on safety upgrades to that crosswalk are within the purview of the peer review being conducted on behalf of the town. Would you happen to know that, Elizabeth?
Yes, they are.
Great, thank you.
I'll ask one, Kristin.
Yep, please do.
Maybe this is for the landscape team, but I was reading the letter about sustainability. It seemed to be focused mostly on like HVAC and the, you know, systems side of things in the building, but was curious if the kind of landscape team had looked at low impact design or a low LID low impact development, applications for stormwater and stuff like that.
Molly, do you want to speak to the stormwater specifically? I can, Haley, I can speak just generally. For example, along the south side of the of the property where the wetland is now, it's a it's a mowed turf lawn. And when rain falls out of the sky, it lands on the ground, it's going to move a lot quicker through a mowed turf area to that to that swale than we really want it to. And the longer we can hold on to the water, the longer we can keep it from pooling in that pooling in that location and eventually running in one direction or the other. The more opportunity that water has to infiltrate. What happens is the soils change and vegetation changes. It's one of the reasons why it's a wetland now and it started out as a ditch because that is a process that happens over time. We'd like to can use the landscape to encourage that. So one of the great benefits of that is the opportunity to grow wetland plants and to encourage wetland plants, which will in turn encourage pollinators. As as we all know, pollinators are under some threat as climate change makes their habitat less and less viable. So those are some of the things that are on the radar, so to speak, in terms of the landscape. I think Molly would be best to talk about stormwater, Molly.
Yep, I can speak to stormwater, thank you, Jennifer. So the stormwater is designed to obviously, you know, decrease any impact to any abutting property. We are increasing the impervious area by adding the parking lot and the addition to the building. And the subsurface chambers that we've proposed for both the parking lot and the building will be able to, their size, to accommodate all of the runoff that hits that pavement. Discharges into the catch basins and and manholes and then infiltrates into the the chambers and stone beds that have been proposed. And those are sized to accommodate the hundred-year storm, which happens every hundred years theoretically. So these systems are sized to accommodate the most extensive storms. And and, you know, allow that water to infiltrate into the ground, recharge. And any runoff from the the pavement is also being treated as well through treatment units. So it will be treated prior to entering groundwater and it will be clean prior to percolation, so I hope that answers your question. If you have anything additional about stormwater, you have to answer that.
I think so. I mean, I don't know, Kristin and Elizabeth, if this is more of a question for like as as we're going through reviews of, you know, sustainability. Like, is, I'm not an engineer, so like, is what was just described, is that considered, you know, standard and, you know, standard practice versus like, you know, more, I guess, innovative, low-impact development applications? Like rainwater gardens, that sort of thing, so maybe yeah, more of a question for whoever is kind of doing that review on our side, but that's just kind of what I was thinking through.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions on the parking.
Yep.
Plan to have any reserved parking or designated parking in the parking lot?
We do, so we would, there are the spaces that are along the side of the building where the the families would be queuing if they if we needed to have them queue or if if there weren't enough parking spaces. Those would be staff parking spaces. So those would be designated. Other than that, it would not be designated.
And also, would you have any requirement or use for just parking for those with disabilities?
That, yeah, I don't know if Jennifer.
I didn't see that on the plan.
There is a handicap space and it is located at the closest point to the building that it can be located.
That's correct, Pat, yep. Yep, there's one handicap space and the the parking lot and walkways are all handicap accessible.
And how would you be clearing snow from the parking lot and where would it go?
So there's a designated snow storage area in front of the existing house where it stands. So, you know, a plow will just come in and push it to that area. Any snow that can't be stored on site will be removed from site as it typically is.
When you say in front of the house, do you mean along Old Bedford Road?
Yes.
Is that likely to affect the line of sight for that exit?
No, it's it's situated far back enough where it would not affect the sightline.
Linda, did you have more questions? I was just thinking and I think I I think I lost my train of thought, so let me make sure Alan and Nathan get to ask as well.
I already asked my question.
Alan, pipe up, because I don't know where you are, so if you just speak up if you have anything. I I did have a question. Who who makes the designation if there's like a right turn only when exiting? Is that up to the town typically, Elizabeth, you know?
That would probably be in conjunction with the outside consultant along with the town engineer. And and what's appropriate and certain design standards.
Okay.
Molly's talked about, you know, the engineering, town engineers comment about the exit driveway. And I think there needs to be further discussion between that safety issue, it's not, from what my understanding, it's not just a sightline issue, it's the distance from the driveway to the actual intersection. So there definitely needs to be a conversation between the applicant engineering and natural resources, because it's my understanding that the driveway can go to the, you know, up to the fifty-foot no build. So that that is something that will have to be addressed between now and when this application gets continued till.
Okay, so there are so there are a number of of questions. I mean, I think that, you know, we we heard that it's taken a long time to find this property and you're very glad to still be able to serve in the neighborhood. And so I I appreciate that you're working hard to to make this property. You know, even better than it than it has been. And I know that the town will work with you to do the the best that that you can for this. So thank you for, you know, working to address the concerns. I know there's a number of things that are still outstanding that you're going to be working on. Are are those, I guess, let me ask that the applicant, and I know there's kind of a number of things in in different people's to-do list, but is it clear what is being asked of you based on the town planner's report? That you need to kind of go back and do a little iteration. I know that you're waiting to hear the consultant's report on the traffic and that's going to have very specific thing. But are the other items in the town in the planner's report clear enough for you to go back and and kind of do that next pass on? And Elizabeth, you might be able to help summarize it as well. But I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
I think I I I believe so, and I think that I can defer to the to the professionals who reviewed the town planner's memo and and I know I I'm pretty, I'm confident that we would be working as closely as we can as we have all along with this project to resolve any problems.
Okay, and Elizabeth, is there anything that we should bring up, just so that everybody hears it at the same time, before we open up to public comment? About your report, anything that 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 maybe we did not ask, we, the board members did not ask about?
Kristin, if I could just interject one thing, Pat, just to emphasize one point in the planner's report from the sustainability director on all-electric H-trac, that's something we've been really pushing for applicants in different scenarios to 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 reach, and there's been some creative solutions we've seen, including in commercial structures. I believe the new bank going in in West Concord is is a air source heat pump and it would be, I think that would speak really strongly to the project if the new portion of the facility was was not adding a a natural gas or propane heat system that it that it was or or oil, I guess, for that matter, but it was an electric-based H-trac system would be would be very helpful. I just want to emphasize that because that's been important for the board.
Yeah, thank you, Burton. And it's also very important to the children's center. That is something that, you know, from the get-go. We've been wanting to make this this center as much as we possibly can a model for sustainability. And being an all-electric center and being, you know, if we can possibly be solar-ready or solar, add solar, it's in a great location for that. We have sent out our preliminary schematics to a couple contractors to get some bids. So we are, that is what we are working for very seriously.
Again, thanks for the reminder, Burton. That's that's good to hear. Okay, so we will open it up to public comment and I just want to remind everyone who is on the call that we we know and we we've heard from the hundred and eight comments and counting so far that there's a lot of support for the project, a lot of a lot of happy families, and that's and that's great. It's a it's a good feeling, I'm sure, to know that you've touched so many lives so far. And then we also understand that there that traffic and and that intersection in particular is a big concern to people. And so we invite people who have comments other than traffic and the intersection concerns to to voice those now. Just because what we know is we do need to, the applicant needs to do a little bit of work, and then also the town consultant is going to come back, so any other comments that that are already kind of repeats of what we have in the letters or repeats of what is very clear as as an issue to work on, probably won't necessarily help our applicant to to shape anything going forward, so if you do have comments that are are different than the traffic in the intersection, we invite you to, or different than you might have already put in a letter to the board. We invite you to raise your hand and and we'll call on you. If you are on calling in, you can press the star nine buttons and then we are alerted that you have your hands up, so we will, we will try that as well. And if Mr. Riley is still on the line, we could, we could start with him, because I apologize, I I cut you off before. And then we'll continue with the names that I see on the list, so if Mr. Riley is on the call and would like to make a comment, let's give him a minute.
Yeah, I'm still here. And I I've heard plenty of discussion about.
I'm sorry, I could you just say your name and address for the record?
My name is Michael Riley. I live at ninety-three Kenny Lane.
Thank you.
Right down the road from where this project is going to go in. Now, to get out of this neighborhood, it is two dead-end cul-de-sacs in this neighborhood. Our only entrance and exit is on Philip Farm Road. They've discussed the exit out of the school, but nobody has discussed the entrance into the school or the fact that these times that they're doing drop-offs coincide with the public school bus system and where that school bus stop is located. Now, I know myself and a few other parents in this neighborhood have discussed the issue of this. And for a kick, I asked my daughter what it was like to cross Bedford Road today. She informed me. She doesn't like doing it. The cars will stop for her. But the last time she went to go across, all the cars stopped for her and none of the bicyclists did. Okay, so please make sure they include the bicycle path in this neighborhood, because it is as extreme as it can be anywhere in this town. And we all know what that's like. And take a look at what this looks like coming down Philip Farm Road. Because I have been stuck on Philip Farm Road going out to Virginia in the mornings, trying to make a left-hand turn and cannot get across. That is more than a five-second delay with the traffic patterns pre-COVID. And that's just to leave my neighborhood. You're you're talking of adding a hundred and fifty cars a day between the morning and the afternoon on that corner. And nobody has spoken to what is going to be the increased traffic going into the Ripley Building with them using the space they have. It's not like we're decreasing any vehicles in this neighborhood, we're going to be adding quite a few more. And the traffic patterns are stopping to pick back up. And as for the date of when they did it, the state was closed on March sixteenth of twenty twenty. I know, that was the first day of my new job and my last one. I've lost my job to COVID. Now, this being said, that traffic study data already declared an emergency in the state prior to it shutting down. And with the dates of that traffic study, the traffic had slowed way the hell down all around. And anybody who says it didn't is lying to themselves. So, yeah, that traffic study needs to be redone with actual numbers. And you are taking our traffic pattern from a C grade to a D. And personally, I think it's closer to an E than a D. Especially with the way you're adding people in. So that's that's the end of my comments on this. The size of that building is atrocious for this neighborhood. Go way out of place and we're going to have to deal with the light pollution that comes off of it every night.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Rachel Morris, please. When you're able to unmute, would you please state your name and address for the record? And again, I'm just going to remind you, we we realize that that the traffic and intersection are a concern, so we're inviting comments that are in addition to to those concerns.
My name is Rachel Morris. I live at five ninety-nine Bedford Street. I'm going to speak with a couple hats on tonight. First, I'm going to speak as a public school teacher in Concord. Been teaching in Concord for twenty-one years. And I wanted to speak to the importance of having a place like CCC educating our young children so that they're ready to come to public school, ready to come to elementary school. Concord Children's Center does a fantastic job teaching our children social, emotional learning so that they're ready to be students when they arrive in kindergarten. And they're ready to learn the most important aspects, which are how to get along, how to be good friends, how to appreciate nature. And I'm also going to speak as a parent. Both my children went to Concord Children's Center. And I was so lucky that they were there. Concord does not have full-time childcare available, other than Concord Children's Center. And as a working parent in Concord, your choices are very limited. Concord Children's Center isn't just like the only option, it's the best option though, because they do provide full-time childcare. But they also provide amazing childcare. My children learned so much, particularly because they were at the Rip Ripley Building, they learned a love of nature. You can see this in the outdoor place gate that was built after my children left. But even before they were there, they learned to love the woods, to hike in the woods. And I do believe that they will do their best to appreciate that in this new building setting. I also speak as a neighbor, as I live right around the corner from this new building. And, yeah, there's a lot of traffic in our neighborhood, that is true. But you know, I think that the building looks beautiful and I believe that it will add to the neighborhood and so I really wanted to speak to the importance of having a Concord Children's Center. It is vital to Concord in many ways. As a teacher, as a parent, I really would can't say enough.
Thank you. And I see we have a lot of hands up. So we we know people have a lot to say, and I'll thank everybody to be as concise as they can and try to add new viewpoints so that we can hear as many people as we can tonight. Brian Farber, if you can state your name and address for the record when you're asked to unmute.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. My name is Brian Farber and I live at forty-one Ash Street, just around the corner from both the current home of CCC at Ripley and the future home, it's two fifty Old Bedford. And I couldn't be more pleased that they found, CCC found a new place nearby to continue the tradition of embracing and enriching the lives of its community's children. I'm going to pass over, obviously, the traffic study. I looked it over. I feel that the impact is nominal just based on on what it says and what I've heard, so I'll just pass over that. But regarding the aesthetic, the current design obviously demonstrates the leadership's understanding of the importance of reflecting the community and the heritage of the community, embracing the history and the and the agricultural history of the area is is important, and I appreciate them taking great pains to take care of that. As a family whose kids recently graduated from CCC, they've always kept the safety of our children at the forefront of their work each day. They put the interest of the community first, reaching out to me and other families to make sure we understand their plans. To answer any questions we may have, I know they've also been reaching out to other families along Old Bedford and along our street as well on Ash Street. The school is engaged. They're concerned about the future of our community, meeting the needs of the area. And so I really appreciate everything that Pat, Penny, and the entire team have been doing. I trust and have the confidence, all the confidence in the world that they are going to continue to listen to the community, and I think this is the right place, the right time. And I'm looking forward to having them stay right around the block from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel Gagne.
I thank you. My name is Joel Gagne, thirty-one Central Street. I just want to first thank the board for all their great work that they do on behalf of all. I thank you. My name is Joel Gagne, 31 Central Street. I just want to first thank the board for all their great work that they do on behalf of all of us. I know this takes a lot of time. We're very, very grateful. I, I'm about a nine iron away from the West Concord facility. And I just kind of want to speak to the safety component that has been mentioned a couple of times and kind of the neighborhood impact. We've been here for just under three years and we, we, though we chose Concord, we specifically chose West Concord. And one of the reasons why was the proximity of that childcare center. It is to me, the crown jewel of West Concord. I really blends in beautifully with the neighborhood. The traffic is, has, has flowed just as fine, even with the addition of, of town government moving in temporarily next door. They have handled it with, with total ease. This is a conquered owned, conquered run, conquered serviced center. And I feel like that still needs to be said because this is not a bright, bright horizons or some other outside entity. This is 100% conquered. These are your neighbors. These are your friends. And it services all Concord and it's very, very important. And not only does it fit great with the neighborhood, but in regards to safety, I had a child in there. For the last two years, I have another four-year-old there. This is a Butts Main Street, which is Route 62, one of the busy streets in Concord. And just yesterday, I was driving my car going home and I saw my four-year-old with his class go across the street. I felt totally comfortable with it, even though this is one of the busiest streets in Concord. And that was my four-year-old walking with his class. They were doing a nature walk. So I think that this is a fantastic project. They have been very transparent about how they're going about this. They've reached out to the, to the neighborhood. They're going to be great, good neighbors because I'm speaking from firsthand experience. They've been fantastic neighbor, neighbors for us. And I just have every confidence in the world that they're going to put a first-rate facility there that's going to blend in beautifully with the neighborhood and they're going to be fantastic neighbors. Thank you so much to the, to the chair and thank you so much to the board for all your great work.
Thank you. Dawn. If you can unmute, state your name and address for the record and then thanks for keeping your comments concise as well.
Hi, Dawn McCullough, 178 Virginia Road. And I'm really curious about the size of this building. You know, I, I agree that CCC needs a home. I'm just not sure that that corner is the right place for it. You know, traffic aside, I mean, traffic, I live halfway down Virginia Road and when traffic goes back to normal, there's times when the cars are backed up to my house, which is literally halfway down to the airport. But besides that, I'm wondering about the size. I mean, my understanding was that the original building was about maybe half even less size than the current proposed building. So I'm just wondering if anybody can speak to the change in the size of the building? Because I think that really affects the property value of those people specifically on Kenny Farm. In an extremely negative way, although I'm not abutting it in that way. I'm super concerned about the traffic, but you know, that is my neighborhood and I think it really is going to bring property values down. And I don't think to make a right on that road and then another right into that building and the people trying to get out of that parking lot is going to be, it's going to be really a disaster once the traffic goes back to normal. But can you guys speak to the size of the building?
Thank you. My, my understanding is that the addition is going to be about 7,000 square feet.
And what was the original proposal? Because I guess my understanding, what I've heard through town is that the original proposal was much smaller than that. And that's a really big building to be up against somebody's house.
I'm, I'm not aware of a different proposal. This is just the one that we, is brought to our board right now, which is the, the addition. Do you mean the size of the original house?
No, I mean the size of the addition.
The, the one that's in front of the board.
There is no other proposal that's been filed with the board. This is the application that was filed.
Okay. Was there another proposal that was presented to a Butters in the past or something?
I, I can't speak.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Board.
Well, that's like everybody who lives in the neighborhood is on here like shaking their heads yes. So I'm guessing that the original proposal that was put out publicly, although it wasn't the one that went to application, was much, much smaller. So I guess I'm wondering why, like the size of that building for what, you know, you're currently housing, I know you're combining two locations to one, but I guess I feel like the size of that building for what you have to what you're putting, it just seems very incongruent to me. So I'm just wondering.
And is it appropriate to, to answer or can I just answer the question?
You can, but I, I think in your original proposal, you kind of talked about how you were going to use all the space, but you know, actually, if you want to hold that, let's see if we can get a number of questions and maybe perhaps you can respond at the end and in case people have similar ones.
I know you guys are tired of hearing about the traffic, but that's going to be really unsafe to kind of go in and out there with all the traffic that gets on Virginia Road. I mean, it's, it's, the traffic on this road is already horrendous. And the traffic on Old Bedford is backed up sometimes to Lexington Road. So it's just traffic will go back to normal and the study needs to be done with normal traffic. It's just.
Thank you. Yep. We, we understand and I appreciate your comment. I want to make sure that we hear as many people as we can. And so I want to make sure that our
Thank you.
Comments are new.
Thanks.
Shan Liu.
Hi, hi, hello. My name is Shan Liu and I live at 11 Kenny Lane and I live here since 2007. So I have two, two of my children, you know, participate in CCC. So I have a good knowledge, you know, how the traffic going on. And I work from home. Two days a week before pandemic, I know how the traffic is, you know, starting from home to out, you know, going out of the Old Bedford. But, but today I would like to talk about the flooding issues. You know, I live here for over a decade. And most of the families, the, the buildings like on the Kenny Lane have wetlands. So the families, they cannot cut a tree and they cannot build additions. So they know, you know, how flooding issues affect our life. We all know that. And our foundations got flooded a few times. Our foundation were basement garage due to the flooding issue. So I would like to address the flooding issue. I am a programmer and I did develop program for civil engineers, for hydrologists. So I work with a lot of professional engineers, you know, I, across the country, I work with, you know, transportation cabinet and DOTs. So what I found out after I spent a few hours reading the storm water report is there are a lot of calculations lost. So the first is the rainfall frequencies. So this analysis is based on frequencies from two year to 100 year. But if for a professional engineer, they know, they can download the rainfall table from NOAA 14, right? And recently, the, the state and the country had just added 200 year, 500 year, 1,000 year. And most professional engineers, they need to analyze their watershed based on 200 year, 500 year and 1,000 year. But this engineer firm didn't do the calculation. And make me feel that they just want to make the peak discharge and the runoff amount smaller, make it look smaller. So flooding is not issue. The next question is about the time of concentration. So for 0.7 acre land is just very small. And for existing condition, they divided it into two subcatchment. And the time concentration is about 10 minutes. That's ridiculous. And the sheet flow is 50 feet and the shallow flow. You see, there's an impurious area and there's no channel flow. So they make the time concentration longer. You know, the longer the time concentration, the smaller the rainfall intensity and the smaller the peak discharge and the smaller the runoff, the, the runoff volume. So they just make it look less. Okay, that's one issue. Another issue is a curve numbers.
There's, excuse me, I'm sorry. I, I, I think I appreciate your careful attention to the report. And I'm going to, do you have, are the, all of the things about the stormwater?
Yes, about stormwater.
What I might suggest, if you haven't already, putting those in a, in a letter? Because I can tell you that the board members are probably not writing fast enough to capture all these things, but if you could put that in a letter to the town planner.
Okay, great.
So I think, I think, and we do, we are in receipt of that letter. So rather than, you know, have you go over it again tonight, I'd like to, but we do have the public, the engineering division who does that careful review and then gives the, the, the planning board members their, their take on that.
I do need all the questions addressed because that's flawed calculation. Because I work with a lot of professional engineers. I know the calculation. And I know the road profile, they didn't even address the, in that calculation, where the debris go, where you know, all the inlays are a set point, you know.
I do, I, I, I appreciate that. But we, you know, what the board has to go on is kind of our, and our engineers and are the experts who present information to us. So you know, if there is something else that our engineering department has not found, often what they'll do is they'll get an outside consultant, similar to what they did with the traffic study. If there are still things in question, my understanding is that there are a number of outstanding issues that the engineering department did raise with the applicant and the applicant will, will plan to address them before we meet again. So I appreciate your comments. I'd like to give some time to other folks as well.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Megan, yes.
Can I add something as well? So town staff does, does not take every comment letter that is submitted, town staff does not go through and analyze and address every comment concerned. That is, that's up to the applicant to make their case and their position and address issues and concerns that have been raised. You know, I, I will make the town engineer aware of the letter and the items raised, but it would be up to the applicant to provide, I guess, the, the facts or the statements in regards to any issues and concerns that are raised.
Thank you. Megan Carroll.
Hi, good evening. I'm Megan Carroll. I live at 277 Old Bedford Road. I just wanted to, I'll, I'll be brief since it's passing my bedtime, but I just want to say I'm, my children went to Concord Children's Center. They're six-generation Concordians. I'm fifth. You know, our families built the roads here. We actually, I had family members who actually worked on the farm where the proposed site is. And I just thought I wanted to bring to the attention of the board, the importance of Concord Children's Center. And I think I have a unique perspective because I, I will be just as affected by the traffic. I can actually see the site right from this window right here. But for me, you know, I moved back to town in 2015 and I had a big transition and not that I enjoy this for public consumption, but I just need to tell everybody that there are people in Concord who do require, you know, I, I needed help to pay for childcare or else I couldn't have worked. And so I was able and fortunate enough to get childcare vouchers. I work with Pat Nelson, the director, and I was able to actually send my children to Concord Children's Center, keep a job. And, and it's only because Concord Children's Center is the only place in town that takes these childcare vouchers. So you know, that's just something I really want to make clear that I'm not the only one either. There are many people like me in Concord and it's important. And I am concerned about the traffic a bit, but at the same time, it is important that people slow down. And I would love to work with Mr. Riley and Ms. McCullough and all of my neighbors to see if we can come together and probably figure out a way to, you know, make it safer for everybody because I think that's the biggest concern. But I just want to say I have full faith in Concord Children's Center. And I know that for my neighbors who are concerned, I, I do believe that Pat Nelson and other people are willing to, to listen to. So anyway, just want to say thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mark Daniel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. My name is Mark Daniel, 359 Old Bedford Road. I wear, I, I would like to discuss this with three hats, I guess. One is a neighbor of the project directly on Old Bedford Road. The second is a parent of children who went to Concord Children's Center. And the third is as a continuing board member of Concord Children's Center, even after my children have graduated. I think I am not going to belabor the traffic issue. I think that's something that will be addressed. But for anyone to say that traffic is not a problem on Old Bedford Road or Virginia Road, that would be inaccurate. But I think the, the question in, in, to be addressed here is the change in, in traffic pattern, not the existing problems. What I would like to focus on is the contribution to the local community. So I, I think we've talked about the greatness of Concord Children's Center, but one of the things that hasn't been talked about was the challenge of finding a site that could service families on the eastern side of Concord. One of the challenges is that childcare is available in West Concord. And I, my children attended at West Concord, which is a great facility, but then increased traffic through downtown, through busy streets and back and forth, adding commute and adding traffic in that direction. So by maintaining childcare available on both sides of town, minimizing commutes through town, across town, and servicing family needs for working families, local to their elementary schools and other things, provides a very unique opportunity and is really the only one of its kind. And so I think without belaboring other points that have already been raised, I think that's one other important aspect is that, that is one of the reasons that a site close to Ripley was selected, was to continue to offer that to families who need that childcare on, on the eastern side of town. And I'll, and there, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jason Bellowitz.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jason Bellowitz. I live at 179 Prairie Street. And I'm also the CCC board chair. I've been living in Concord for approximately six years and five of those years, my children have attended CCC. And to my family, CCC is a very special place. The teachers are fantastic. The program is excellent. And our son is now in first grade at Thoreau, right down the street from us. And, and he's thriving because of CCC. And one thing, it's important to note is Concord Children's Center is a nonprofit organization. And you've probably seen the lawn signs around Concord. We can't celebrate in person, so our advancement committee has been creative, finding creative ways to celebrate our 45 years. We've been at the Ripley site since 1981, Emerson's since 1986, and the West Concord location since 1975. And it was originally at the Harvey Wheeler Building and then we moved to our own building in 2002. I live walking distance to West Concord and personally, CCC is a great neighbor. Traffic and parking is really never an issue. As we've heard tonight, pickups and drop offs are spread out throughout the morning and afternoon. And we're talking about one of the busiest intersections in Concord. And frankly, when we decided to move to Concord, we liked the proximity to West Concord and daycare, frankly, so we could walk to the center. I'll, I'll leave with, as a childcare center, we do our best for our children and what we're trying to do is focus on stability and continuity of care. And we plan to be at 250 Old Bedford as our permanent site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jennifer Uvaldino.
Hi, thank you. Yes, Jennifer Uvaldino. I'm at 38 Craft Tree Road in Concord. I am also a CCC alumni parent. My 12 and 14-year-old kids, long, long out of CCC, had a fantastic experience there and we love the organization and what they have offered our children. But I'm, I'm also here to speak. Community Chest. And for those that are not, do not know the Community Chest, we are a, an organization in Concord, serving Concord and Carlisle for nearly 75 years. We raise funds through our community, businesses and residents, to actually give back to support the nonprofits that serve our residents. And we have been supporting CCC for more than 20 years, particularly because of how they serve our community and the residents in our community. The, in recent years, the, we've given to support their tuition assistance program to help give access to all families, regardless of their ability to pay, to be able to attend high-quality childcare. And in, I know some other folks have mentioned this, that it is important to have this option in our community so that we can have a diverse community and allow all others to be able to attend and have these same resources. And the Community Chest Board, as well as many other residents, feel the importance of supporting this type of program in our town. So I wanted to express our support as, as the chest for CCC to be able to continue to provide these kinds of resources.
Thank you. Maeve Pardee.
Hi. Recently, there's been.
I'm sorry, we can hear you, but could you just say your name and address?
Okay, my name is Maeve Pardee. I live at 87 Stone Street in Concord. And recently. Um and recently, there's been a lot of attention paid to rebuilding the infrastructure and communities around the country. And I think that the shutting down of childcare centers and schools during the pandemic. Made everybody really aware of the inextricable link between those services and the functioning of our economy. And made it clear that those programs are part of the infrastructure, the economic infrastructure of our community. So in addition to the critical role that's played in children's healthy development and education. Concord Children's Center has for forty five years. Been an essential part of the socioeconomic framework for employers and working parents in the area. Including the fact, as one of the former speakers said, that they help families who can't afford the full cost of care. Gain access to subsidies so that their kids get the same uh benefits of a high quality program. Um but one of the things I'd like to address is the concerns of neighbors about the potential impact of the project on Old Bedford Road. And the surrounding streets. I've lived on Stowe Street in Concord for more than thirty four years. And when I moved in, the Hunt Gym, which is directly across the street, had been mothballed for years. And Stowe Street was a quiet, sleepy little street. Well, since then, the Hunt Gym was refurbished. It reopened. It built a swimming pool, a spray park. Playground, a running track, and it now hosts various sports activities. And family activities indoors and out on the fields during the week and weekends, as well as the summer day camp. It's also a polling place during elections and the staging area for the uh. Uh Patriots Day Parade when the parade takes place. Has this increased traffic and activity in the neighborhood? Yes, it certainly certainly has. But I really believe that part of being a neighbor and a community member. Is that realizing that change is inevitable. And that the kinds of changes we're looking at with Concord Children's Center is the kind that contributes to the strength. And the vitality of Concord, and I really support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Collins.
Hi, I'm Krista Collins, fifty five Highland Street. Um we've lived about a half a block from CCC for about ten years and both of my children attended CCC and have. Gone on to thrive in the Concord Public Schools. Um CCC has always been a good neighbor and I can't think of any more delightful non-residential use to have in a neighborhood than a preschool. Um during the last year, when joy could sometimes be hard to find, the return of children to the CCC playground was really. A ray of sunshine in the neighborhood. In the time that we've lived here, we've never experienced any issues with parking on our street. Or backups at the CCC parking lot. And I think it's important to note for people. Who aren't familiar with the West Concord site, that it shares an entrance with Harvey Wheeler, which houses Concord Carousel and the Senior Center. So even with the traffic to and from those two facilities, there's rarely congestion in the parking lot. The only time it ever gets a little dicey. Is on election days when Harvey Wheeler is used as a polling place. And of course, that's not going to be an issue at Old Bedford Road. Um I also applaud the sustainability measures that are incorporated into the site and building design. Parking relief will help meet an important sustainability measure through the reduction of impervious surface. Landscape design makes excellent use of the site conditions and the palette of native plants will provide wildlife and pollinator benefits. That don't appear to exist currently on this site. Um and regarding runoff. You know, I think, you know, having a surface that's lawn is is gonna pro- produce more runoff in the current conditions than if it's vegetated. With a more complex um and interesting landscape. So thanks very much.
Thank you. David Genova, could you unmute until your uh name and address, please?
Yeah, hi, David Genova, seventy six Kenny Lane. Uh my wife Julie and I have lived on Kenny Lane for twenty years. Uh our daughter did go to CCC. And you know, although I I feel terrible that CCC is being evicted from the town of Concord, it's. You know, I think of what what Joe Gagne said, it's conquered own, conquered this, but Concord's evicting them. There there, this is the absolute wrong location to put up a seven thousand square foot building. Um next to a hundred and thirty year old historic farmhouse with a farmer's monument. The traffic, if anyone stops on Virginia Road, they will get rear ended. The traffic comes flying around that corner, and if it's not a car, it will be one of the hundreds of bicyclists. That fly around that corner. Um I'm also concerned and Elizabeth Hughes brought it up. Um the exit from the driveway, anyone taking a right. Is going to go immediately into people coming off of Virginia Road going left. Perhaps if this does go through, it should be a left turn only out of the driveway. Turning a C. Intersection into a D intersection on a COVID friendly traffic study. Uh I think it'll, as Mike said, will be more of an E or an F. The traffic study should be redone and quite frankly, to me, it doesn't matter. The traffic's terrible, pulling out a Kenny, um pulling out a Philip Farm Road. We wait, we wait, we wait, and the cars come. Particularly from Old Bedford, they take a left onto Virginia at thirty miles an hour and they're just flying by. Right down the street past Dawn's house on their way down to the uh, you know, to the um in- industrial parks down there. There, there's nothing good about this location. It makes me think of the Starbucks in the center of town. It's going to be a traffic nightmare. It's going to cause accidents. I'm afraid people will get hurt. Obviously, the crosswalk needs to be up, you know, if this does go through, and I hope it doesn't. The crosswalk needs to be redone. Um that's a no brainer, especially if. You know, people at CCC really think people are gonna park at Ripley and walk. That won't happen. They'll park uh on Merriam or they'll park on Philip Farm Road and they'll walk over. There's nothing stopping them. That's what will happen. And during snow, when they lose parking spaces and we heard Pat say. You know, twenty should be sufficient. Well, maybe twenty three, maybe twenty four. I I don't believe it. I believe there's gonna be a lot more cars and they're gonna be parking everywhere. And it's safety and it's just not healthy for the neighborhood. And as Don McCullough said, you know, last year at the Haf's House at the Coffee. I believe the discussion was around a five thousand fifth uh square foot addition. And now it's seven, so it definitely did get bigger. And even five thousand was too much. And my last thought is the opening picture. The artist rendition of what it would look like is fiction. It doesn't look like that. It shows this beautiful house and this nice building with. A a beautiful field in the background. There is no view that you will get that. There are houses behind it from the view that was taken and it's just. Right out of the gate, a bad neighbor. And I I'm sorry for their plight. But really, the town of Concord is the one who caused this issue by evicting them.
I just want, I just want to add. Uh my thoughts just briefly. Um I'm Julie Genova, seventy six Kenny Lane and. I absolutely feel for your situation. I loved CCC. My daughter went there. I was working full time. It was a big deal. I've been working in one of the middle schools in town for the last eleven years as a school nurse. Um I had um other children that attended the Integrated Nursery School. Um all three did, actually. I had to drive my other child over to Concord Children's Center, so I'm very familiar with the Harvey Wheeler Building and all of the um. The traffic in that area. To compare. Being a neighbor to the West Concord. District families over there and what it's like to drive in and out of the parking lot over at the Harvey Wheeler Center and over at that CCC spot. It it's like apples and steak. It's not even apples and oranges. I mean, this area over here and the place. The Concord Children's Center at that corner is so ill fitting. And it does work over in West Concord and I know what it's like to pull in there. Um it it doesn't work here and it really does have a negative impact for all the people that have been living here for decades. And trying very hard to pull out onto that Virginia Road. It's fast, it's dangerous and. I I'm crossing that street all the time to get over to the Ripley Building for walks and um. It it, I I'm I'm very much against this project and I deeply discourage any, any um approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Henry Haff. And again, I'll just uh appreciate that everybody's trying to uh have a lot of comments. I know everybody's trying to keep as concise as they can, but. As we get into the the last few people, just please make sure you're adding kind of something that perhaps has not been discussed yet. Thank you, Mr. Haff.
Uh good evening, Madam Chairperson.
Name and address?
Yes, uh Henry Halfton, Philip Farm Road. Uh we are the immediate abutters to the north of the property. We share about two hundred feet of common property line with the development. We sent a six page letter um with issues and concerns. And we would appreciate um and we have appreciated the uh discussions uh that we've had with. The Concord Children's Center. We, we appreciate the mission of the Concord Children's Center. And the importance of that facility. Um we are uniquely impacted, I would say negatively. By the placement of this building uh on the site. Uh we have requested, and I would request prior to any approval of the site, that some of the, many of the um. Site and uh buffering uh requests we have in that letter be addressed and amended on the current application. Uh for instance, raising the six foot high fence up to an eight foot high fence. Uh at least along the area, particularly between our property and the uh parking lot. We have cars parking within three feet of our property line. And I am concerned about the water flow from that proximity and also a visual buffering. Um to the dumpster, which we will have a great view of from our, both upstairs and downstairs. Um as I said, we we have had preliminary discussions, but we feel that prior to any approval. Uh those modifications need to be made to the plans. Um and or they need to be conditioned within any approval that is put forward. Um I would also request, as stated in our letter, uh that. The traffic engineers look very closely at the safety of that intersection. Um as has been noted, but I would like to reemphasize. The Middlesex Green, ever since Welsh's moved out, there are one thousand parking spaces up in that. Uh office development and the uh traffic engineers did not model any of that traffic. Or any of the traffic that could or would return to the um. Hanscom and um Lincoln Common Office Spaces, which probably contribute contribute at least another five hundred to a thousand car parking spaces. Um fifty percent of which used to flow by our property and um. Those need to be modeled in any true traffic report. In any case, I think the uh the letter was um addressed a number of things. I appreciate the attention to lighting. Uh we would also request that there be uh time timers placed on those lighting. Uh so that there are at least dimming, if not um off hours for the lighting. And while. The the barn is perhaps a very appropriate metaphor for the development. Uh we will see the broadside of that barn. And we are very concerned about the removal of the nineteen trees. And the reduction in the visual buffering uh that will occur between our property and the new development. So thank you and we look forward to the amendments requested.
Thank you. James Lee.
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair. And uh I I think everybody here is is pretty well.
I'm sorry, I I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you just state your your address for the record as well, please?
Oh yeah, sure. Uh I'm at eighty one Kenny Lane. And uh so as I was saying, I think, I I don't think anybody here on this call. Would debate the the need for for CCC and uh and support for CCC as. Uh a necessary component of of Concord. Um my kids went there as well, so uh and we we just had terrific experience. Um I suppose my concern, uh and and it was mentioned somewhat by Sean earlier, was about wa- water runoff. I had worked. Uh with the Charles River uh project, um it with runoff mitigation through Harvard University and. Uh I just know that in my experience with uh calculating runoffs. Um there's our calculations and then there's reality. Um and you know, the amount of oils and salts and gas and metals. That runoff impervious surfaces are, it 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 can be significant. Uh now, this is a relatively small parking lot, but um we are surrounded by wetlands here. Um and. Anybody who lives in this uh in this area knows that the the building codes or the building permissions. In this neighborhood are very, very restrictive. Uh getting a variance here to even put a, you know. Uh an arbor in your backyard is very, very difficult here. Um so. And that's part and parcel of living in an area that's surrounded by wetlands. So I I would just recommend that uh. Some effort be put into a real consideration of not developing necessarily conservative numbers on runoff, uh salts. Various things that might enter the environment here.
Thank you. Ashley Cohane.
Hi, thank you very much. Um my name's Ashley Anderson Cohane and I live at forty four Central Street. Um during the day, from where I'm sitting right here, I am able to see Concord Children's Center and West Concord. Um speaking to the concern of light pollution at this time, when I look at my window, I I can't see anything um at the school. Um I'm a teacher at Concord Carlisle. I was born and raised here. Um my. Father, grandfather, great grandfather all lived in Concord. Um. My three year old is currently attending the West Concord site and next year my one year old will be attending the Emerson site. Um and we have never had an issue with any overflow parking on our street during day, during the night. Um even on those polling days, uh when there might be more cars, we have had no issue here. Um no traffic issues. Uh I walk my daughter to school every day. Um and have never found any sort of concern with that as far as safety or with the traffic. Um CCC has been an incredible neighbor and just a fixture in the West Concord community and I strongly support them in this new place.
Thank you. Um we've got uh three more uh folks for public comment and we appreciate that everybody is kind of bringing their own unique uh additions. So thank you very much. David Levin.
Yes, uh it's David Levin, thirty three Concord uh Lane. So I'm. Not an abutter, but I am someone who is uh direct uh directly affected by the traffic flow. Uh I had originally raised, I'll just have to throw this out. I originally raised my hand to make my comments and you asked for no duplication. So I lowered my hand and immediately found that this is. Two different discussions. One is how wonderful CCC is and how many people have benefited, how beautiful the property is. All of which I agree with. The other discussion is the fact that the the site they found, and I know that the. Um housing market in Concord is very hard to deal with, but the site they chose is absolutely the worst from traffic flow. I will not go through all the um comments that were already made about traffic flow. Uh but I will add a couple more. Uh with the current direction of the driveway, there are now two people making left turns. Uh less than fifty feet from each other. So you think there's uh no uh accidents um on uh. This intersection. Well, all the intersections that used to be at Miriam will be there. At uh Old Old Bedford and Virginia and compounded by the double left turns, the people. Who are not listening to uh six maximum. Um you can um. Well, how do I want to say this? I guess leap is down the road. It's on Route sixty two. It's not a difficult intersection. Same problem, two lane highway, very heavy traffic. People still think it is fine because they're rushing to bring their children in. To cut across traffic dangerously, to block the road. That behavior will continue. I do not care what the intentions of CCC are or it's the intrinsic value. To this community, which I think also are very high, but the reality is people are people and you have picked an untenable. Location for child uh Children's Center. Uh and and. Um I, as I said, I will not repeat all of the things that are wrong with the traffic report. And, as I said, I will not repeat all of the things that are wrong with the traffic report and the lack of real data. There's no, I went through that thing line by line. There's no recognition of the new intersection superimposed on the existing intersection, nor the gridlock affected by entry on Virginia and exit on Old Bedford. That's the absolute worst direction, and even if you go the other way, it's bad anyhow. It's a wonderful, wonderful institution. It's a horrible, horrible location for it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've got Casey Atkins, Diane Jakes, Dawn Fox, and Carrie Rankin. And those are going to be the last comments that we're going to take for the evening because we're going to continue this discussion another time as well. So, Casey Atkins?
Thank you very much. Casey Atkins, 4 Hawthorne Village in Concord, Massachusetts. Thank you to all of you who raised the traffic concerns. I think those are important and should be addressed critically. I'm here to mention I'm in support of Concord Children's Center. My children did not go there. I, however, did go to the Harvey Wheeler Building decades ago. But I worked in coordination with Pat and her leadership team through the Concord Integrated Preschool, building a playground at the Ripley site. I just want to speak to how important Concord Children's Center is as a community partner. That community is part of the ethos of what Concord Children's Center has really established itself in the community and that it goes to more than just those of us who have young children all the way through sort of the full lifespan in Concord. And their continuance in the town is very important. These traffic issues are certainly important and appreciate the fact that their leadership team are responsive and thoughtful and hope that there's a resolution to this because they do need a home and they are an anchor in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Jakes?
Good evening. My name is Diane Jakes. I'm at 12 Kenny Lane. I'm on the corner of Philip Farm and Kenny Lane. I'm not going to repeat the wonderful comments made by the people who oppose this project. I personally think that the traffic study is not valid. I work in sales and I am on the road. And when I was on the road in early March, the traffic had dropped dramatically prior to you doing the traffic. So, I think that that is an invalid study. Prior to pre-pandemic, the cars backed up on Virginia Road to be 20 or more. Again, trying to get out between four and six in the evening or between six and nine in the morning. And that is only going to be made worse. But my biggest concern is the safety of having that entrance on Virginia Road and then exit on Bedford, Old Bedford Road. One thing that nobody has mentioned is a loss of a beautiful view as you come around at the end of Virginia Road. That's going to be blocked forever by the people who enjoy it, walking their dogs, walking, riding their bikes, biking over to Heritage Farm, a main heritage pool. Those things are not even being included. I don't doubt that CCC is a great community and a treasure for Concord to have, but it doesn't belong in this neighborhood. My other concern is the water. I have lived in this neighborhood for 30 years, and every year, as things have been built up on Virginia Road, on Old Bedford Road, the water table has gone up. My sump pump went from going maybe a month out of the year to almost 12 months. This is only going to be made worse anytime you cover up land and force the water to go someplace else. It's going to end up in my basement. And I think that that needs to be addressed along with the other things. So, my biggest concerns are the water issues and the traffic issues and the people, and nobody has addressed the fact that people coming out of there are going to turn down Philip Farm Road and make a U-turn right in front of my house, go back out and go the other way because they don't want to go the direction coming out of there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn Fox?
Hi, this is actually Chris Fox. I'm here with Dawn. I live at 16 Miriam Road, so I'm right on the corner of Old Bedford and Miriam Road. And I apologize, I don't have the camera on me. For some reason, I can't get it to work. So, I'll just speak briefly. But I do want to echo what my fellow neighbors have said, Michael Riley, some of the other neighbors, about the traffic study not being accurate, being done in March when COVID had started. Traffic typically, prior to that, backed up on Old Bedford Road coming from Route 62, let alone right here at Virginia. But we're living on the corner of Miriam Road sometimes, and I'm sure that Concord Children's Center is a wonderful facility. I'm all for preschools. We have two grown children now. But I just think the location is rather challenging for the neighbors because of the traffic. But it affects the whole area. There are bikers, as Michael Riley had stated, who fly by. A lot of times, you can't cross the crosswalk because of cars who don't stop. I think it would be great, obviously, if you did put up a sign or something. But coming out of Miriam Road, now there's going to be two areas that we have to watch for. The exit to 250 Old Bedford and the exit of Virginia pulling out. And I'm not quite sure. Our mailbox is across the street. My elderly parents live with us. My 88-year-old mother gets the mail, and I hold my breath every time she's getting the mail because of cars who come flying from Old Bedford down Miriam, who are racing to Ripley School to go get their children for pickup. There is a speed limit sign posted that it is a school zone, 20 miles per hour, but cars don't follow that. And that corner is a very blind corner. And I also am concerned that people, if they can't park in the parking lot, will park on Miriam Road and park in front of our house. So, I just wanted to state these things. I thank you for allowing me to have this time. But I just do, I'm curious if there's been any consideration into the Miriam Road intersection as well.
Thank you. I didn't see that in the traffic study, and we'll see if the consultant raises that issue as well.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
And then our last public comment for this evening, Carrie Rankin?
Hi, thank you so much. My name is Carrie Rankin. I live at 95 Upland Road. I am a close abutter to the West Concord location, and I also have three children who have either been through the program or are currently in the program. I want to speak to just two very quick things. It's been a long night, and thank you all. Thank you all to the board and the incredible 120-something people who joined this call. Number one, I live just up the street, and from a property value perspective, I'm a young family who moved into Concord looking for childcare, looking for a town that I could raise my kids in. And one of the things that we looked for was close proximity to high-quality childcare and being in walking distance to this facility, whether on the east side of town or West Concord, is a highly valuable property bonus, frankly. It's something that we looked for as we were looking into town. Second, I know the, I know Pat Nelson and the CCC community, and I can say that they will take a lot of these comments and truly listen, not just tonight, but for the longevity. They are very wonderful, responsive, kind neighbors. And I know that, you know, these kinds of changes are hard and can be, change is different, difficult, but I also know that they will make this a beautiful site that all of Concord, including the neighbors, will enjoy. And that's all I want to add, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we really appreciate everybody's comments, whether by, in writing or on the call tonight. And we know that this is a discussion that is going to continue. And thanks to the applicant for hearing the comments and working with both the town and the abutters and families to come up with the best result we can. Were there any comments from the board? I know we still have to at another time discuss the site plan criteria and lighting, among other things. But any other general comments from any board members before I would entertain a motion to continue? We'll need a date, Elizabeth, a little help with the date. Yeah, Kristen, could you just give or Elizabeth an overview of the process going forward?
Sure. So, we're still waiting for the contract for the outside consultant. Hopefully, we'll come back from the townhouse this week so that they can get started. It will take them about two weeks to do their review. And then their letter will go to, you know, it'll be posted to the website. It'll go to engineering. It'll go to the applicant for the applicant to go through the questions, issues, comments, recommendations so that there can be a discussion. And then between now and to when the board continues, the applicant has the issues and concerns that have been raised by town staff to go through and work with town staff to address those questions, issues, and concerns. And, you know, if there needs to be changes to the site plan or different elements based on tonight's discussion or town's discussions with town staff, those changes would be made and those plans would be resubmitted for the board to consider at your next public hearing. The only one issue is that the site plan, the board has 90 days in which to file their decision. That is sometime at the end of June. So, if the applicant is still, you know, actively working with the board and the town staff and to address comments raised by the outside consultant, you know, they would have to grant a time extension to file that decision. But it's an iterative process.
Thank you. So, Elizabeth, do we have a potential date for continuing this?
I think the first question goes back to the applicant and their team. Knowing that the consulting engineer will, you know, I'll be sending another email up to the townhouse tomorrow about the contract. So, knowing that they're, you know, hopefully going to get the contract in the next day or two. So, it'll take at least two weeks for them to review everything. So, you're looking towards, you know, the outset, you know, May, Friday, May 21st or May 24th until comments come back. And then I think the question at this point in time comes back to the applicant and their team. How long do they feel they need to review that material? How long do they feel they need to address the issues and concerns raised by engineering? And then we can work, we can work from there. So, that would be back to Pat and her team?
Yeah, Pat, we need to, the board needs to actually put a date on this, a date and time when we're going to continue the public hearing, too. We have meetings on Tuesday, June 8th, which is right before town meeting. We have another meeting on Tuesday, June 22nd. Those may be the ones in June. The 22nd is, we've got something on that, the 22nd, though. We've got MAPC, I think, on the 22nd, or it may be our public forum.
Yes, the 22nd, and so that was something else for tonight. But yes, the 22nd was to be the public forum for the Throw Depot Business District project.
So, June 8th, a month from now, does that, you know, you, the applicant, enough time to go address kind of what you've seen outstanding so far and respond to the traffic consultants' recommendations when they haven't started yet? I'm not sure who on your team is going to be able to make that determination.
Kristen, this is, can you hear me? This is John Amorall with Omni Properties on behalf of the applicant. Thank you. I think that based upon the timeframe, that the traffic peer review would potentially be coming back and knowing there's a holiday at the end of the month and that there are other questions and that have been brought to us by the engineering department, that it's prudent that we probably ask to go on to the June 8th. And if anybody on the team feels otherwise, I would ask that they please speak up as well. But I think that that would give us ample time to properly address the concerns and answer the questions that have been raised, and in particular with respect to the traffic and the drainage. And I'm just looking around to see if anybody on the team is shaking their head yes, or, and I see Jennifer is saying yes. Pat, if you're there, if you could.
I think that's fine.
And, thank you, Kristen, if I could just, or Elizabeth, if I could also ask just if, as long as we are willing as the applicant to work with the planning board and ask for an extension, if it's necessary beyond the 90 days, that's a, is that a formality that you would then accept that request?
So, actually, it's, you are not requesting, you are granting the time extension. So, and then the board has to formally accept the time extension that allows them to file their decision beyond the 90 days. So, based on the timeframe, you know, having the application continue out to June 8th, you know, if everything gets addressed and then the board concludes, you know, their conversation and discussions and on the 8th, then more than likely, I would ask that you grant a time extension to, because the board would usually continue the public hearing, one more additional meeting so that they can review their draft decision and their conditions and have a conversation with the applicant and get some input on the decision and those conditions of approval. A time extension would be needed to push the, from June 8th, it would go out to their meeting in July 13th, solely because June 22nd is going to be a fairly, hopefully, a fairly large public forum on the Throw Depot redevelopment project. And that will be a full 6:30 to 8:30 endeavor, and it won't be a standard, regular meeting for the board. So, just to give you the, you know, the timeframe. The rest of the board doesn't know about June 22nd yet, so don't tell them.
Okay, thank you. And certainly, we will do our best to be very timely and thorough in any of our responses to questions, comments, and issues that have been raised, whether it's from town departments or even on, in this meeting tonight. And certainly, we would expect that when the, if and when the project is approved, that, you know, see, Concord Children's Center will be a good neighbor down there for many years to come. So, we do want to make sure that we're handling this process appropriately and with the proper concern and respect for all. So, we understand that timeframe, and I would ask if we could then be heard in the next public hearing on June 8th.
Okay, Elizabeth, I can't remember if there's other things on the agenda. Should we try for 7:30 or?
So far, I'm not, I mean, I'm not aware of any large projects.
Okay. All right, so then 7 o'clock? Okay, so I would entertain a motion from the board to continue the public hearing. I can make that motion. I move that the board continues the hearing for the application of the Concord Children's Center proposal at 625 Bedford Road to.
250 Old Bedford?
250?
Yeah, Old Bedford.
250 Old Bedford Road to our meeting on June 8th at 7:00 PM. Okay, Mr. Seah?
Yes?
Mr. Flint?
Yes.
Mr. Buzzdett?
Yes.
Ms. Orbital?
Yes.
Ms. McAnaney?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
And this is Ms. Ferguson, yes. All right, well, we will look forward to seeing everybody again on the 8th. And good luck with all of the iterations between now and then. Thanks for your dedication on this, and thank you to everybody who showed up. People are welcome to stay. We're going to be talking about the upcoming town meeting. Or else we will, we will see everybody at upcoming meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
I'll just dive right in. At the last meeting, went through four of the presentations and I can just run through them quickly again and.
That's right. Well, there was, there was several people absent last time. So we did assign, town meeting is on, is it June, June 12th or something? I gotta.
Yes.
Town meeting's on Saturday, June 12th. And we have, I think it was like five articles that were, we are moving. And so we assigned all the people who weren't here last week to articles last night. You're welcome.
So, yeah, so the public hearing is next Thursday. So if you want, I can, I will, we'll just quickly run through these in order. So the first one is the three slides. I don't know why that happened, but anyways. And it really is just the three bullet points, the three changes to the tree preservation bylaw, and that's it. And I believe.
Alan.
Alan is.
Agreed to do that.
And so the speaker notes down here are just pretty much what's in the warrant.
There's a little typo there, right?
Okay, where?
First, first bullet point. Then it should be.
Okay.
And I forgot, I gotta look at the order of the, the warrant. Did we by any chance put these in order from least controversial to most?
No, I have, I have yet ever been asked what order they should go in, so.
Right, I was just curious. I, I'll look at the warrant, I haven't.
Okay, so the next one is Article 36, which was kindly given to Burton because he wasn't there. But so going through the presentation, it, it really goes through the reasons. The state model bylaw, NFIP, you don't get flood insurance if you don't stay in the NFIP. It formalizes the compens, the compensatory storage requirement that's been in place since the 1970s. So this is in, all in the speaker notes for Burton. It, I wanted to highlight the waiver provision, which is, has been a policy as well. And Burton, you can go through these and see if you want to add to your speaker notes. Goes through and identifies the benefits and that's it.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I, I don't, I only had a few minutes to look through this, but it looks very straightforward. I'm just trying to remember how often the town manager, or excuse me, the moderator picks the flood, the, with biannual flood plain amendments for presentation.
So the question was, which of these five might make it to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
The one that says if you don't have this, you can't get flood insurance.
Yeah.
Thank you. And thank, Kristen, thank you for signing. I was hoping to get the, the two family, but I'm happy to take this one, so.
You can also have seasonal outdoor dining if you like. That one, that one is up for grabs.
You may remember I waffled on that one.
I know, I know, so did I. So I don't know how I ended up with it, but.
Really feel strongly about it, you want to trade?
No, I'm fine. I'm, Nathan, I'm fine. It's, I, yeah, I wasn't there.
Why don't you both present the two family? Because then there'll be two of you. Split screen, it'll be like you're in the two different houses. Try it.
No.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for doing flood plain.
Okay, and then the next one is the outdoor restaurant seating. And I don't, I'm not sure who got that one, did you?
I did said, I say I would do it, but Kate, I'm happy for you to take it as well since you, you didn't get one this round. So if you'd like to do it, you're welcome to.
I'm completely agnostic.
Or Linda. But we were giving Linda a pass because it was her very first one.
Yeah, u- usually the board does not make the first, a first year board member do a presentation, but so restaurant seating, really it is just these two slides. The objective, the reasons for the amendment. And I thought it was important to highlight what this amendment does not change. Because there, you know, it was concerned, you know, raised at the Concord Business Partnership about, you know, what it will not change. So wanted to make that apparent and that's all in the speaker notes.
Thanks, yeah. Do you mind sending that to me? I don't know if I saw it yet, so.
Sure.
And then, do these get posted on our website yet or not until, like, really close to the hearing?
They will get posted the minute the presenter gets back to me and says, yep, it's, it's final.
Perfect.
Okay, so next one is two families. So this one is for Nathan and it went through and it's pretty much the same, the one that was put together for last year. You know, but this got postponed. The one thing that did add, and that was based on the Concord Business Partnership meeting we had, was adding the two maps that show the locations of the residency district. But in general, it's the same. It goes through, you know, what it does, what is the amendment? What are the objectives? Gives a little information about existing two families. The two maps. What does, you know, what is the bylaw proposing? What are the limitations? And then the, oh, how it aligns with the town goals. And then the last thing, this was also from the Concord Business Partnership was, you know, why is this a special permit and not just by right? And so those were added.
Yeah, that, that seems like what's going to be most discussion. Either, you know, people saying, well, this isn't going to do enough because it's going to present a barrier to developers to want to do this. So I think there's going to be a lot of discussion about that. Thank you for adding that.
Yeah, so there, there may be discussion, you know, at the public hearing about it. But there is not the possibility to make an amendment on the floor of town meeting to make it by right.
Right.
You can make a zoning bylaw amendment more restrictive. You can't make it less restrictive. And by right would be less restrictive than a special permit.
But, but what could happen, which was what the intent of the board was, is to, you know, move the article this year and, and once it's approved and by the town and in place, that in the future, we could move again that it would become by right. So, you know, if people, if people have that concern, that was really our intention.
See what the use is and see, you know, you know, how it's being used. And then the last one is for Haley and put this together and I think between, excuse me, between now and the 13th, there might be some refinements to this, but Haley can tell me. But the same format, the reason for the amendments, you know, adding the purpose and definitions. Which, hang on a second. So, oh, I'm gonna have a coughing fit, sorry. Have you seen me flop on the floor? Somebody call 911 for me. So Haley, I mean, I think we kind of need maybe work on this, but, you know, the reasons for the amendment. And then I, I think we might just need to work on the order. So, you know, the current bylaw. But we added, you know, purpose and definitions. Yeah, so amending the bylaw. The alternative analysis, and there's two parts to turn it, alternative analysis. So I, I think Haley and I need to work a little bit on the order of these. So this might change a little bit and there might be a few other things added, but, you know, the substance of all of the bylaw amendments are in there.
Well, thank you for putting all of these together. And thank you to the board members who are presenting. So everybody's going to be there next Thursday, the 13th, as far as everyone knows. And Elizabeth, when shall we make sure to get you any revisions by?
So I.
It's Friday?
I think, no, I think Monday at the latest. So I'll have to send them, send them in. Because I, Nancy and I don't have any, you know, we, we do not control the Zoom meeting. It is a webinar. So the format is a little bit different. There's panelists and attendees. And that is, the webinar function is handled through the town manager's office. So Nancy and I will be, you know, support team, so they will have all the presentations.
Yeah, so that was the other, other question, but has anyone attended the, any of the public forum, what are these called?
Public hearings.
Public hearings so far, like I think Finance Committee has, has had one so far. Oh, I see, I see a, an attendee has. I just want to, oh, so Linda, I guess, one of our questions was about kind of format for ours. We were, we want to make sure we have good, robust public comment. And you know how challenging it is in this, in this way? We typically do it where you people use the raise hand function and then we, and we call on them. But that's going to be a webinar, which is slightly different, I think. What we're doing now is, is the meeting, right? Not the webinar. So, so when they do the, the webinar format, there is a Q and A function that we can disable so that we don't kind of miss things. And I think that's what we're proposing, right, Elizabeth, is?
Yeah, so what, the last time the board had a webinar and there was a Q and A function, it, it becomes almost impossible for town staff if people start actually putting in questions. Town staff may not be the right person to answer that question. And each of the board members does their presentation for an article and should be the ones answering those questions. How, I believe it was the finance, might have been Finance Committee, how they utilize the Q and A function was, instead of raising your hand if you wanted to speak on an article, you would just type into the Q and A, I have a question on Article, you know, 35. Put your, their name and their address. And then the chair would have to go through, you know, all of the Q and As, you know, to make sure that you've got everybody and recognize them. Somebody gets recognized, they get promoted from an attendee to a panelist, you know, takes a little, you know, takes a couple of seconds. So there's, you know, there's those, there's those two different ways. And I, I think Kristen has had the experience with the raised hand and I, it's my personal opinion that you do an amazing job. So I, I think the raised hand function is, you know, works, you know, works for this board just because the board is used to handling it that way and would prefer not to have the Q and A function. Because there's, there's always the person that doesn't listen to directions, so.
Yeah, it's hard. We just, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't overlooking anything. So if any other board members are, are seeing something about us disabling the Q and A that we should know, know about, let us know. Otherwise, that's, that's how we'll try it on next week. And we will open it up for public comment at the end. But Elizabeth, any other, oh, the, we still have the other thing about June, June meeting?
So I did meet with Chris at M A P C and we talked about, you know, doing the, the public, the big public forum for the Throw Depot Business District. And what we decided was that taking the June 22nd meeting, just, just so I, you know, I'm cognizant of, you know, the board members have their, you know, real lives and not trying to add another meeting. So, but moving the time up to 6:30 to 8:30, just because I think for mentally, that looks a little bit better than seven to nine. But the format would be, because M A P C would host the, would host the webinar. But the format would start with M A P C doing a, a short little overview presentation, you know, how, you know, how we, how did we get here, kind of idea? Then do a presentation on just the uses in parking. And then there would be breakout rooms, maybe 10 people to a breakout room. And a planning board member would basically be the facilitator in the breakout room where people could ask their questions and provide their input on, you know, uses and parking. And because I, I, it, it becomes unwieldy in a webinar format for something of this nature, where it's, it's so new and there's just so much going on. So I think if, you know, having the breakout rooms where it's, you know, just 10 people and then everybody comes back in and then the M A P C would give another presentation on, is it? Oh, the design guidelines and the dimensional standards. And then we would have another set of breakout rooms for people to, you know, talk about the, you know, that presentation, the design guidelines, the dimensional standards. And then everybody would come back in to the webinar. The board members and facilitators would kind of just give a quick overview of, you know, the things they heard and, and then, and then next steps would be the last step.
What do people think about that format?
That sounds good to me. I mean, the question's coming up in my mind of, that's completely out of everyone's control. But like, I think we're all vaccinated now, adults are going to be vaccinated in June. I guess it's just, you know, it's, it's too, this kind of thing is much better to do in person. So I guess I'm just, you know, are we, is there any talk from the board's segment of doing, starting to get back in person? And would that be a possibility for this forum?
I, I can ask.
Oh, wait, actually, she's raising her hand.
Thanks, Susan.
Hold on, you're muted.
Well, first I want to say town meeting is the 13th, Sunday, the 13th at 1 o'clock.
Thank you.
Now tell, repeat your question again. Oh, on guidance for meetings? No, they were waiting for some guidance from the state about what, what form things will take and when. Will there be a kind of a hybrid thing where we sometimes zoom and sometimes not? No, none of that is known yet, so. If you're talking about a June meeting, I don't think that, I don't expect there'll be, that'll be able to be done in person.
Yeah, so Kate, part of the issue being is, yes, you could have a small meeting in a very large space where everybody could social distance if you knew exactly how many people you were going to have at that meeting and can, you know, be able to accommodate, you know, that social distance requirement. But for a public forum of this nature where you have no idea how many people are going to show up, you can't allow the first 50 in, everybody socials distance and then everybody, sorry, you can't come in to this public meeting because, you know, you know, you can't social distance appropriately. So that's, that's kind of, it's not whether. So that's, that's kind of, it's not whether people are vaccinated or not, it, that's still the requirement for large indoor, um, meetings.
Okay, thank you. So the, I, I think that the way that you described doing it, um, remotely, it, over the webinar, sounds really great. And, uh, thank you to Selectwoman Bates for, for updating us on the situation from there on to. Yeah, I, I wanted to pressure Elizabeth to have it outside, like in the Harvey Wheeler parking lot. But, uh, logistically, that also is
Yeah, I'm not sure how you do
Not gonna work.
Barbecue.
Right, bring it, I was thinking, bring your own chair, so.
The, the, um, caucus was held in the Harvey Wheeler parking lot because we couldn't have it not be in person. And that was flashing lights for your car lights for yay or nay and listening to the dialogue on your radio.
Oh, I didn't realize it was in the car. Oh, that's interesting, because it was January, right?
Yeah, yeah, but it was very well organized and went smoothly, so.
All right, um, Elizabeth, do we have any other, um, announcements? I know we want to get to a quick public comment before, um, or does any, any other board member have any other announcements?
Um, the only other announcement I have is that, um, after town meeting, um, Alan will be leaving the board, he is the only board member going off this year. Um, so typically, um, other planning board members start talking to, um, friends and colleagues and, um, try to drum up interest for people to submit a green card. So, um, I, I do, I do have, I do have one person, um, that, uh, in mind. So I'll be sending out, um, an emails because Marcia and I, we also pound the pavement to try and get members, so. Um, but if board members can start, um, start, you know, seeing if they can get people interested in submitting a green card, um, that would be great.
Um, does, does the information officer ever kind of put out a little announcement in the paper or other that says, hey, these boards have vacancies? I know that we always talk about it at the
Yep, yep, we, we always talk about it and she sends something to the journal and then, you know, nothing gets put in, so.
Well, I guess I was just thinking, because not just for us, but at the, uh, chair breakfast, they say, you know, who's looking for members? And so there's probably a nice list of committees. And so for people to see it all at once, it would be kind of nice, they'd be like, oh, you know.
There, there is something on the, on the webpage about committee vacancies on
Okay, great. On, on our, like, on our town governance page, I think?
Yes, yes, I, I'm trying to think, I, I think it's in the, probably in the town manager, um, or a select board. I'm not sure, one of them.
That's all I have.
All right, well, if there are no other, um, board updates, we will open it up for public comment. And, uh, you, please use the raise hand function and then, uh, state your name and address for the record, Ms. Drit.
Hi, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I want to thank you guys for how you've been running these meetings. The, uh, supporting documents are easy to find in the, the link in the, the, um, uh, the, uh, agenda. And having the reactions available is really wonderful. Those were really missing, uh, in the public hearings because only the panelists are allowed to see how many participants are there. The participants button disappears when you are in a, apparently, in the webinar format. And so it feels like, as a participant, you are in a vacuum. There is no way to, uh, to communicate. I've been in large meetings with hundreds of people and having the chat or any kind of, of, uh, or even the question and answer, uh, facility, um, enabled is a real help to us because then everyone can see those comments. It's not necessary for the board to call on anybody, they're in the chat, they're public. Um, and it, it is a real benefit to us. Um, please, the, the, it, it's hard to feel like you're in a public meeting if you can't even tell how many people are attending, much less who they are. Um, can you please, um, I don't know who is the technical person who's in charge of that, but I wish that they all did.
Thank you.
Do.
Yeah, well, 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 we don't typically do a webinar, we will for our, our next, um, you know, for the, uh, uh, public, uh, hearing that we're having for the warrant articles. And it's a balance of, you know, trying, because we still have to see people and hear people and some of that. But thank you for that, and Susan, I know it looked like
Is there any reason that you can't continue with the now, right? You have to do a webinar because
The first hearing, uh, select board, we, uh, the board could see the number of participants in, uh, the, the, um, town manager's office who was running the webinar, didn't realize that that wasn't available to the participants. But that was different on Thursday night for the Finance Committee meeting. And we got a lot of feedback that it was much better. So the problem with, I know they're, they're trying to be, be as visible and have everyone see and hear as much as they can. But one of the issues is that if you just do a regular meeting, which actually happened on Thursday night, the Recreation Commission, and they got Zoom bombed. So, um, the webinar is something that gives a little more control to, to prevent that sort of thing from happening.
Interesting. Well, thank you, we will, um, we will, you know, try to make that as, as inclusive as possible. And, uh, hopefully this will be the last time we have to do that for this round. So hopefully next year before the town meeting will be in person again.
I hope it's a hybrid.
Well, isn't it, isn't it nice to not have to go to meetings from, yeah, it would be nice to
Yes, so many more people can, can participate.
Yep.
Parents of young children, not just
Hopefully, a lot of silver lining, so thank you. Um, any other comments? I know everybody wants to get off the phone, you know, look at the computer.
So you will, um, you do not have minutes for tonight, so for your next meeting.
All right, well, um, hearing, nothing else, uh, we can adjourn at 10:19. And thanks, everybody, and we'll see you, uh, at next week's, um, presentations.
Thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.